I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call for signature resolution on the Board of Equalization so we can visit about it a little bit. And the consent to Welcome Home Wyoming program. And the audit engagement agreement. And I'd also like to add to old business if we could. Just revisiting the email that we sent out about the hiring freeze.
Becky, did you have executive session?
No, you want to do that?
Yeah. Whenever there might be time. Something came up yesterday. After, late afternoon.
Do that right between what we have no new businesses right for adjournments in?
Yeah, if that works for you guys.
What is it based on?
Litigation.
That's III? Or is that triple I?
I think that's triple I.
Changes to the agenda. Big motion looks up to the agenda with the items pulled and the changes made.
A second round.
We have a motion, probably second, to approve the agenda as amended during the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. There are all the vouchers. Back to business here. Next up is the consent agenda. We have three of pulled. Pulled voucher warrant number 71139. Pulled voucher warrant number 71128.
And I pulled one to add, 71109.
Any else that needs to be pulled off the consent agenda there? So, motion approved the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda pending the three pulled vouchers.
Second. We have a motion, probably second, to approve the consent agenda with three vouchers pulled. And two resolution pulls and an audit engagement agreement pulled. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Start with your voucher.
Mine. I actually just, I just had a question about what exactly it is. It's Kirk County planning. ESRI, small government enterprise agreement fee.
That's for the mapping system. It's the ESRI.
It's the ESRI, okay. Why do we pay it to Kirk County?
Because we have an agreement with Kirk, Navara, and Westy County. And it's paid to Kirk County.
Kirk's the one on the contract and we are under there, so we all, every county pays it.
The agreement was signed last meeting.
Does that, does it change yearly or the amount, or is it like a contract amount?
It's a set fee that we have at ESRI. You guys just sign the contract last meeting.
Okay. Now, I was just wondering, it's kind of a big amount. That's educational for me.
I guess we'll. Mine was on Julio Holmgren. It says on the back here, this puts the project 6,640 over the bid price due to extra items needing fixed. What were the extra items? That's, that would've been half of the bid, so I'm just curious why we didn't talk about that. I think actually more than half of the bid.
I think the one guy in the project, I don't know, one of them I think was the, was the contract. Didn't come up right. And there was a couple of extra spots that he did on the sidewalk.
Rebar wasn't that one?
Oh, yeah.
Put rebar in the sidewalk.
That was.
Yeah, I don't know the problem. I just, that's more, that would be half the bid.
We could ask him for an explanation.
If you approve it, I'm okay with it. I just didn't realize it at the moment. It's quite a deal.
I have one here that I pulled for the Mondale Heights on the patient transfer type 25. It's for the amount of $2,252.
I'm gonna just get Brian in here on this one too.
I'm concerned that we, last meeting was announced, we had a contract. Mondale had a contract with a hospital to do Title 25 transfers. And it was gonna be run to the hospital. This system's right, bill comes right directly from Mondale Heights on that. We talked about in our meeting about trying to work something out, and I said, we have private business, Home Drive Commissioner. It wasn't advertised, we didn't put it out for bids, we didn't even ask for public input on this. Can you enlighten me some, Ryan? Or anybody?
Well, I will tell you regardless of your concerns there. That transport happened minutes literally after all that was decided. It worked very well. It was very efficiently done. I talked to Don briefly about why we didn't invoice the hospital. I think, it's out of my realm of expertise, but it does make sense. Talked to Michael a little bit, why that wasn't billed, you know, to him. Because he carries the account. I think that would probably be less effective. If you can't go through the hospital, I understand why you care.
Well, I'm concerned about red flags thrown out.
I get it, I get it. We had the same issues when we would purchase furniture through Accra. But we purchased furniture through Accra versus, you know, pot, let's say.
This was talked about in the Commissioner meeting, in a public forum with you, Chairman President. This was talked about, discussed, was originally supposed to go through the hospital. The hospital said you have to have the right insurance on it. Roger, with the Title 25 before, through his service, that would go directly to the county, which is why the hospital said there would be more liability if it went through the hospital. I was hesitant to even talk about this. And you were here during that conversation and advised that, let's figure out a plan to get it done. I was called within minutes by the county attorney, and I responded to the county attorney. So, if it's an issue, that's fine, but that issue should've been brought up in the public forum when, at the time, not after the event happened and not without communication from the chairman. And certainly, this was put in on the 25th. I came to the county clerk and said, how do I go about doing this? Did that, asked questions. It should not, it should not be an issue after the fact. So, if it is, you need to make those transparent at the time when the discussion happened, and you did not do that.
And one, I'm gonna just, outside looking in, I see that, you know, a lot of stuff happened within a day or two. I see the urgency, you know, it happened literally minutes, because I wasn't even sure. Dan and I weren't sure, well, is that contract done? Is, you know, all that stuff. And it was able, you know, the transport was able to be performed. So, I think that's kind of a, you know, if there's some things that we need to iron out, let's iron them out. But that was a, I mean, stuff happened.
I understand, but it's, we've got a bill here that the board didn't, we had a discussion. There was never a motion made to do it, move forward with that. I mean, I, I get where you're coming from on how it works and everything, it's just, red flags are gonna come up.
I get the optics of it too, but regardless of how, you know, the county has to pay for that transport. Whether I do it, whether Roger does it, whether the hospital does it, one way or the other, it gets, it gets, the county has to pay for it. The only thing, if you can't, if Mondale cannot, for these liability reasons, cannot, you know, do that through the hospital, which apparently why Roger didn't either. The only other solution that I, outside looking in, can think is then the invoice needs to go to the county attorney's office. He's intimately knowledgeable of who's being transported, why they need transport, and so on and so forth with the Title 25. And then he submits the voucher.
Do we have W9 filled out? Do we have the insurance on file? And that's something that's, before we let anybody do contract work with the county, we have to have all that stuff in place.
Well, no, I wouldn't have that.
Yeah. I did, that was, I wanted to bring it up so we didn't get blindsided about stuff being.
Absolutely. Better timing submission, that should've been asked for and should've been at that point. I did not ask for this, nor did I chase after it.
Well, the, the, one thing I have really concern is, there's a name on this. Is that an employee or is that a patient?
That's who was transported, and that is HIPAA, but it still has to be reported according to the hospital, so you know.
It's recorded at the hospital. It isn't turned out on public record. That's, that's a real big concern I have to throw up.
Well, can't be done just like other bills that come through, Title 25 and hospital both, just black out the name.
Yeah, that's what it should.
I mean, once, once it comes, if it hasn't been done.
Well, it's done before it gets to the submitter.
Right, and that's, that's why it would also be a good, good way to go through the county, because he needs to know who's transported. Otherwise, we're designed for something we don't know.
I know that too, but I mean, it's just, there's some things, things we need to work out on.
They usually come through our office anyway.
What was submitted was told to me to submit by the hospital to the county.
Yeah. I just, I think that one step would be easier dealt with, submitting it through.
I just don't think we, yeah, because it happened so quick. Like, the board meeting happened that Thursday night, and then we had a crisis the next day. And then, you know, we all understood that it was going through the hospital, and then, okay, and then I didn't.
Well, I have to read the minutes. It was, that's what I got, it was coming through the hospital.
So did I. I think everybody thought that, go to the hospital, through that merchant. Because even Dan and I, that night, was that going through the hospital? How's that working? We don't know. I mean, it was.
Okay, well, I'll just answer a lot of questions here, and I want, I want those questions answered in the public so we don't get.
And I'm, I was fine with that in the public last time. I'm fine with it this time, but it's just odd that it takes so long for lack of communication, especially toward the chairman.
Um, I, maybe because it happened so fast, this just happened. And I feel like Don was gracious enough to put his business out there to do this. But maybe even to protect Don, it should be, there should be a notification, a bid for other people who are interested, parties to do this, if they have the vehicle, the insurance, the liability insurance, the people, you know, maybe there should be some specific standard put out as a bid. Not that we don't want.
Those rates, yeah, those rates were according to.
And, and make sure that we have all of that done properly, so no one comes back on Chairman Taylor. For, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Taylor, to, to do this. He was gracious enough to volunteer his business to do it, but to protect him and to be fair, you should probably put it out as a bid to everyone.
Yeah, well, he did, but just put an advertisement for interested parties.
Right.
That would not be a bad idea, to keep the transparency open.
It is a good idea. Something that should've been done long before the problem got to where it got to me.
And then once, the other thing is, once, you know, maybe, Missure Taylor should get with Michael and make sure that he has a copy of all his insurance and all of that in the file that we have on hand.
Yeah, I want to make it clear that I have no problem not doing it. But don't come with a problem, and then minutes responding, and then weeks after the fact, come to me with, you, you had concerns. If you had concerns, you should've brought them up at the last meeting.
I wasn't at the last meeting. I just, I read the minutes.
The meeting when this went through, you were here.
Yeah, we just, we had a discussion about trying to find some options for that.
We've had communication problems before.
Oh, yes, anything else? Okay, and the other one is the signature resolution 2322.
I like it. Can we go back to that? I'd like to move, I'd like to go ahead and move to advertise it to the public. And for Missure Taylor to get with Mr. Seltin, to get all this information on hand and to discuss or kind of make sure that the billing is done the way it needs to be done, so he can get paid for what he did.
A second. A motion, probably second to put an advertisement out there for interest on to do Title 25 transfers to the public. Is that what the motion was?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Then on the, the other half, that motion just dawned with my.
Jim, W Mountain down tomorrow.
That's the motion to pay the three vouchers.
I move to pay the three vouchers that we have in question.
Second. Have motion, probably second, to pay the three vouchers in question. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I think we should hold my voucher until I get that documentation to the county attorney. No, we'll do it, we'll do it transparent.
Amendment motion for the two.
I'll make a motion to approve the two vouchers. And put the other one on the hold until you give your paperwork to Michael. And then we'll, and then we'll, just, it'll automatically go through, once Michael tells you that it's done. Is that good?
Yeah. So, when Michael gets the document, that proper paperwork, then we'll just run it through.
All right, second. Have motion, probably second, to pay the two vouchers, 71109 and 71128 immediately. And voucher 71139, when the proper doctor paperwork will be placed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Resolution 2322, Board of Equalization.
Yeah, just the initial 120 days expires tomorrow. Just need to have the extension to finalize the formal permanent rule process to adopt in this permanent rule, and that's it. So, and I have a timeline set up with Becky now, when we're gonna get this done, if you remember the email. Having our public hearing at the end of October. Just, it's within that 240 days, for the temporary rules. It's just an extension to make sure that they don't lapse.
I just pulled it because I didn't know what was going on. And I know you, you have communicated with Becky, but I feel like we are the Board of Equalization, so if you would keep us in the loop too also, and let us know what's going on, because there are time limits, and we do need to get those permanent things in order before it comes up again, or before we have to do the emergency again, so.
No, we'll, we'll have them out to the Secretary of State and the notice out next week. And that'll give us time to have the public hearing or the public comment, middle, late October. We'll be within the timelines.
Once you get them down, you'll send us all copy?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll just be the identical thing.
Any more questions or explanations on that one? Okay, the next one is Resolution 2323, the Welcome Home Wyoming Program.
Um, I started looking this up, and it kind of didn't feel right to me, so I did some research. And it, the Welcome Home Wyoming program is a loan program that's done through the Cheyenne Housing Authority. And the Cheyenne Housing Authority does their loans through US Bank. I called six different lenders who either had never heard of it or have never used it, know what's out there, because it's not the best product. I, I won't sign up on it, because I don't feel like we as commissioners should get involved in a lending area. I, I talked to this Greg Hancock at Cheyenne Housing Authority, and he essentially told me, it's a loan program for first-time homebuyers. I asked him what difference it was between the Wyoming Community Development and this one. He said, well, sometimes our rates are a little different. It sounds like fairly reasonable to say that they're, they're pretty equal, but most lenders go with the WCDA because it's a state program. I'm, I'm not comfortable with this being through the Cheyenne Housing Authority. And what it's hooked to for statutes is the statute for housing authority. I feel like we would be backing a loan program through Cheyenne Housing Authority, where then they, it opens them up to do other things in our county. If, if you want to use this program, you can go to a county that, that has a program and still use it through a lender. Our, our local lenders don't use this program and aren't interested in it, so. I just wanted to let you know what I found out.
Had some calls this week on, on our consent agenda. The consent agenda is, is, it has a lot on it, but there's a lot of stuff that our constituents don't know anything about. So, I think if we're gonna have this many things on the consent agenda, including this particular one, which a lot of people didn't know was a grant, we need to have a discussion and talk about it before we approve the consent agenda, because there was a lot of people that weren't sure what some of this stuff was.
That's always, is the option to pull it.
Yep.
So, do we wanna pull that resolution off total?
Well, I can't make up everybody else's mind, but.
What's your opinion of it?
I have mixed feelings about it. It sounds like a good deal, but then there's some parts over tied into the Cheyenne Housing Authority, and you're limited where you're gonna go with it.
And I'm not sure. It opens them up to our county, and I'm just not sure there's any reason at this point for us to, to give that permission for the Cheyenne Housing Authority to do business in our county through only one bank that they chose.
I, I didn't realize until you mentioned there that if somebody wants to go through that program, they can just basically have.
They can find a lender who does the program.
Or to the next county, it's not a big deal.
So, general idea, the board wants to pull that one off completely?
Um, I move to take that one off the table for now. Unless they come back and give us a really good reason. It's been around since 2014, and I honestly, being in that business, have never heard of it before, so.
You have a second? I also have a motion, probably second, to pull Resolution 2023 to Title 20 off, put it on hold. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
We will pull that one off total then. The next one is the chair's signature on the auditing engagement agreement.
Um, I have to pull that one, because I've seen a couple of the audits that have been done by this company. And when Jeannie Stone and I were looking at human resources issues, one of the things that they had brought up on their audit report had to do with human resources. And when they were called to ask questions, they were very vague, and pretty much said, well, we just kind of go through. They kind of pick and choose a little bit every year to audit. It didn't say, to me, they didn't give me any confidence in their auditing of our county. And I frankly haven't heard a whole lot good about this company. I'm thinking if they've been doing it for several years, maybe it's time for us to try a different audit company. maybe it's time for us to try a different audit company. Maybe we should audit our auditors by, or audit by another company. I mean, they can get stale. If they do your audit every year, every year, and they have all your information, it's very easy for them to skim over things that they've looked at every year and not really pay attention. And so I, I just, um, my thought process is perhaps we should look at getting a, a different auditor.
We're gonna be a little behind the eight ball then because we have to put that up against the mountain is.
For, when, when is the deadline to have it done?
They start.
Exactly. It's supposed to be done.
It's supposed to be done by now?
Well, they will, they will start.
Come in in August, start it.
And then we done by?
They will have it all done.
The end of the year.
Backed up by January one. Soon as our fiscal year's over, they usually start. And it usually takes them about six months to go through it.
Verbally, the county's already committed. This is just a.
Well, as the county who committed?
The commissioners did when we came to do the presentation.
When he gave his presentation, three months ago.
He gave, he gave a presentation, but I guess I don't remember his committing to.
Actually, it was March, March or April.
If it's too late to do it this year, I would really like us to look at it next year, getting a different auditor. Um, I think it's just smart business practice. If, if you look at places that have problems, a lot of times it's because they've used the same auditor for years and years and years and something's slipped by. Then you need a fresh pair of eyes.
And when they come up here and go through their, it seems like about four or five of them are going through.
Maybe you can sit down with them.
Well, I, I'm not saying they're not a bad, I'm not saying they're a bad company. I'm saying that if they've been doing it for several years, sometimes it's good to switch out and get a new auditor. Essentially, it's auditing your auditor to make sure everything's been done right.
We've been with, we've used.
Not very long.
For about, maybe five years at all, that we've used these guys.
Yeah, because other companies we were with for twenty-some years.
And I'm, are these, are these people just, um, do they do just government agency type audits?
They do the majority of the county for the state.
Would it be okay if I looked into other auditors in the state that do government audits? And bring you the information in January?
Yeah, or even sooner.
Okay.
So do you want to still look forward with this letter of engagement then?
Anybody else have anything to say?
I pretty much need to.
I guess we need to. We don't have a choice.
I see nothing wrong with the thought process. It is a good idea to audit the auditor. It's just the timing.
Right.
You said during.
If it's too late this time, then we should look at it next year.
Complacency happens a lot, so, yeah.
So we do need to approve the Resolution twenty-two and the audit engagement with the consent agenda. Chair, may I motion?
Um, I move to go ahead and approve the, the the audit for this year with Lou Riley and Company.
You did Resolution twenty-two.
Oh. Is that what it is? Which one is it? Consent? It just says Chairman, oh, the twenty-two? I'm sorry. And to approve the resolution for, uh, Resolution twenty-two, Board of Equalization.
Second. Have motion Prop. 22 to through Resolution, term signature Resolution twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-two, and term signature on audit engagement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Aye. We've got all the consent bidding stuff out there. Next is public comment.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach?
Yeah.
We go through this quite a bit and I'm sorry to say I'm probably the only one that's been through it as far as the board goes now. Our budget has never given us money upfront for the next year in budget. I mean, never has happened. We've always waited till June or July before we start ordering stuff because we can't pay for it. Up until last year, we never had money rolling over. Okay, we've always just kind of worked at that. But two years ago, we sat in here and we talked about the budget. And what we agreed to, or what was brought up and it was talked about, is that we wanted, we always had issues with the entertainment because we could never get much money out of boards for an entertainment sale. So we wanted to wipe that off of our, our, uh, our budget. And when you guys approached us last year, Ed was there, Becky was there, I think someone else was there too. But when we sat there, we talked about it and, and the agreement was, we worked on our, our donations to put on our fun stuff affair. That money is ours to do with what we want. We happened to do very well last year and we had some seed money. At that meeting also, I think it was, it was brought up that you guys gave us a check ASAP to cover our twenty-two, twenty-three fair. We've always, it's always been that way where that month of the, of the fairs, when we, we start asking for the money, because we don't have it. We never have. And, and, and now we're sitting here this year, sitting there, well, we got money in the bank, so we want to take. I say we, I'm talking about all of us, okay? When I say that, I necessarily talk about myself. Well, we got money in there that we, we actually made enough donations and stuff to, to help our, our, our fun stuff that we was able to carry five thousand dollars or thereabouts. Okay, so we added to that this year. And we, we, we brought the money in, we had it up to, well, right now it's up to ten thousand dollars in what we have in the account. We went out and we found entertainment. We spent, we paid dearly for our bouncy houses and stuff like that. It does, we do have money that's brought in that we, that they sponsor some of our, our programs like the Ranch Rodeo. We went out and looked for the fun night, we want to bring it back. We'd love to have commissioners come back and help us out with that. You know, that kind of stuff, we get that money back in there. And we do make a little bit of money, like the Kell Cutta at the, at the Ranch Rodeo. We get twenty-five percent. I don't even remember what the number was, okay? So I'm sitting here today with, with, uh, with, with what we have in the bank, and the bank does show that we have was on paper. The bank shows that we have ten thousand, six hundred and one dollars. Now, that's money, now, like I say, we've never collected money from the fair board before the fair. It's never, we never ever carried over. Ten thousand, six hundred and one dollars. We wrote out some checks for the bouncy house for a couple of the judges and stuff like that, which is usually covered by, not the bouncy house, but the judges, is covered by the fair board money that they put into. Well, we wrote checks out and we have the checks that's not cleared of ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. We're thirty-one dollars overground. And I talked to Commissioner Garrett there and, you know, I don't know if we talked about it a little bit, but anyway, everything was good. But the agreement we had at our last year's meeting was, whatever we raised, we could use for our fun nights. We don't want to build money, but we, we thought we could work up a cushion, we had somebody to help us get through those until we got to following check the year before. Now we're going through the twenty-three, twenty-four fair, which just went through, which is on that budget. We don't have enough money for that because that's not what we kind of agreed on. We don't want to build money in our account. We want to have a nice day, but we still want to do the entertainment. We don't, we're not asking you guys for entertainment money. We work with what we make and that's what we live with. That's what we agreed to. But, like I say, we've never collected money upfront, never have. It's always seems like we fight for it. We wait till June to start ordering stuff. And in July, because we know we can let everybody go a month or so. But we can't start at the end of February and after the fair because if you look at past history, our bank account was empty. Up until, you know, several years back when we had that slush fund that they made us deplete. I really, we need to put something down how we're gonna do this. If we pay in June, gotta understand, we gotta have that money put, put up there. If we're gonna pay it, somehow get things raised, we're paying us at the end of fair so that we can put on next year's fair, everybody's gotta be on board with it. We all move on. You know, our board members all do. I'm the only one that has sat through meeting after meeting about that. I really want to see how we can get that resolved. Because we don't have enough money to put on our year's fair, because we do not have the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And the fun stuff, I still like to say, that's our money. We put on the fun stuff. If we carry money over, we'll use it to get us going through the fair and it gets us through June till we get you guys' budget to pay for what we did like this year. That's really all I really have on it. We did make, sponsor wise, people helping us out. I've got, we made a little over ten thousand dollars that we asked for donations to come in. We're just gonna spend really close to that on the entertainment stuff, but a lot of it goes back, like I said, it comes in and goes out. So, you know, most of it's been paid out as far as our revenues. We still have judges to pay for, some deals. We have, uh, some supplies we need to restock our facilities with, because we use a lot of supplies. And then we got our, our, um, what do they call that money we hand out?
Premiums.
Premiums. Which is in, you know, that's somewhere around three thousand dollars. Our judges is gonna be somewhere around three thousand dollars. Then we've got a bunch of other little stuff. We really need to sit down so everybody's on board on how we do this. We have never collected money upfront, okay? As far as fair. But like I say, right now we're thirty-one dollars in the hole. We still have a little bit of money to come in. But I really want to say that when we're done, we still have the cushion that we built, commissioners, that we built to help us get through and start next year's. We did hand you in a, a piece of paper last year stating where your money went last year. But last year when you wrote the check, it was kind of emergency. We needed it now and you guys gave us the check for it. That was for last year's fair. And, and that's the way the budget, you know, it goes that year. So, anyway, we just need to figure out what we can do with that. And, and, and just move forward. Somewhere we need to put it in writing, whether we're doing current fair or we're doing the following year fair and get that caught up and it's in writing somewhere. Okay, that's fair. Fair went very, very well. It really, the grounds looked great. It, it, it's not a problem. A lot of us put in a lot of hours down there. The fair went, went awesome. Sale was up high. We still have issues that, that's all I have on far as the fair goes, as far as, as far as what we have, as far as the fair issue we have. This is a list of the stuff that I put down here that I think the, the, the commissioners here should look at. This is what we're paying with your money right here. Kind of a list of it. Don't get me wrong, I might have missed one or two items on it. I'll give that to you later. We got our sponsors. We have great sponsors in this community, but we've never raised money to put on the fair. We've always, since we started this, we, we dropped the entertainment and then everybody's on board with that, right? And we, we're billing this money. We're going out and asking these people. We got people that sponsored the ride, the Ranch Rodeo, Pig Show Feet, which was me. And, and this is just items of people donating this year for us to make these events that we have during fair a success. And it wouldn't happen without every, we owe Garrett a, a great, thank you. He was, he was out there every day watering, dragging and everything else that we could eat. So, you know, commissioners did, did put in some time there. The other thing I have, and, and I guess I didn't really worry about, really quickly on some of the facilities we have, our big doors in our barns went out. I mean, they, they broke underneath. We did hire Louie to go in and fix them. I'd like to consider this, so I don't have to come back next time, a door repair. Okay? He worked on our two big doors. And you physically could not shut them. We was actually having people try to shut them with skisters. They were just completely rotten on the bottom. Uh, we did lose more than a rock wall this last storm. Garrett seen the, the last one we had. When we picked those rocks up and threw them in a pile, more than a rock wall went. Our contractor, we had a bid on to do the event center. I can't get hold of him anymore. So, we still got the leaking issue. We need to get on that and we have to get that fixed. Especially that back door has to be, it has to be, you know, when you're in that kitchen, you gotta have an excellent there. So there are a few things with that building we have to, we have to get after. Um, I think I told you guys, we got the roof done in the open class building. We need to, we still have some money that we're gonna put into it to try and get it to where we can rent it. Somewhere, and I'm gonna, I'll, I'll work off of Becky's memory, maybe something else. Way back when we started that roof, that building, COVID hit. Everything got delayed. Somewhere, I want to say that the commissioners agreed to put so much money, is that still available for us? It was like seven thousand dollars, something like that.
Kara spent a lot of that. She would bring the bills.
On the building?
Up here.
Because the roof's the first thing we've done to that building.
Yeah, she spent a lot of that.
Okay. She may have worked, well, I, I don't know. So anyway, um, I do have a person that's willing to help us out on that once we get to working on it. They're gonna probably donate a little bit more money.
Yeah, we all, all love, we need the spreadsheets.
Okay, that, that's fine. I mean, we're, we're gonna find the money to fix it. That building needs to be put up in, in operation. And then that's what we'll help out. So, anyway, long story short, we've never collected money before the fair. We, we documented last year. We had to do the same thing, what we spent your money on this year. We need the money.
I'm confused. I'm gonna step back a few steps. I only partly heard some of the conversation between you and the clerk, but I'll start with, what is it that you're asking for? You have ten thousand, whatever in the bank, but you have, you're in the negative. We, we got the checks that you have out, so I'm confused on what you're asking for on that particular portion of that. I have other questions.
We still have about ten thousand dollars worth of bills to pay. Thereabouts. I mean, I, I'm not for sure exactly what it is. But like I say, the money we went out and gotten, in the agreement we had at our meet, at the fair board meeting, is that whatever money we had, we could use it for entertainment, where we never asked for it. And it was the first, it was the first time we did it. You know, we've never had, we've always gotten money from the budget and you guys have always paid us a little bit, but we've never had enough to do anything. So Kara wanted to try and go big. And she did. She did an awesome job going out collecting money. We spent, when you guys cut us that check la- last year at fair, and I don't remember, was you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Because at that meeting, you guys decided you was gonna cut us the check so we could go ahead and do our, our, our fair. And we did. And then we, like I say, we itemized what we spent the money on, then you guys received it. Well, we actually collected more money than we could spend and that's where that nest egg came from. It isn't money that we save from, from the budget, some you've gotten from you folks. It's money we beat the street to try and get people to sponsor the barbecues and, 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 and all those events, the, the bouncy houses, everything we, we do out there. And that's, that's kind of where we raised our additional money. We had ten thousand. We brought a lot of sponsorship money that went in. We still got money that's gotta go out.
I, I understand that.
And, and that's where that ten thousand dollars is, and we wrote checks. Our bouncy house was seven thousand dollars. That's what they cost us. And then we paid a couple of the judges, which is usually covered by you guys, and that pretty much took care of the ten thousand dollars. You know, but some of that's ours because it's entertainment. Like the seven thousand dollars, that's something that we would.
But if I heard right, some of that is covered with sponsorships, like the bouncy houses? If I heard that correctly, you got a portion of that and.
Well, not the bouncy houses, we got nothing off that. The friends affair was gonna help us with that. We did not charge for that. But like the Ranch Rodeo or, or, um, we got a portion of the Kell Cutta. I don't wanna say, we're talking, talking a few hundred dollars. It's not much.
So where I'm going with this is, is that, okay, so if you, whatever you're collecting in sponsorship, you're putting towards entertainment.
That's, that's what we agreed to, yes.
Okay, but there's still entertainment bills out there that are not covered. No, what is not covered is the things that, the monies we need to put on fair. Pay our judges, to pay premiums, to pay for the, the consumables that we need to put on fair. And our, and our budget that was approved a month ago, there's ten thousand dollars approved from you guys. So, and the only reason we have ten thousand dollars in our account right now is because we went out and fundraised for it.
And none of these checks were.
So we haven't collected a dime from.
So we haven't collected a dime from you guys to put on this fair. So.
Okay, I got that part of it. Let me go, and then you said you worked on some roofs, or you did some roofs, some trying to fill in, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, that was, I changed the subject, I was done with the fair itself. I was gonna give you a rundown on the facilities we have.
Well, you're not repairing roofs with your money, right? Because that should come out.
No, we, that came from the Friends of Fair. We had a donor, we had a donor that gave us money to work on that building. And that's where some of the money came, Becky was talking about Kara's spending. We had, we had a sponsor that gave us money, and they do not wanna be recognized.
No, I get that, but those are county buildings. And we have a line item for county building repairs. That shouldn't need a sponsorship.
Well, the person wanted, they want to donate. This, we didn't go out and drum that up.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is maybe that donation could have been used towards whatever slush fund you're talking about. And anything that's done with those buildings, like the wall, like the roofs, that should come, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that should come out of totally separate from fair funds.
I agree it should. But this person came to us and asked, what needs to be repaired on the fair grounds? And we're not gonna run them off.
I'm not saying run them off, I'm just saying those things could come back to the fair if we're aware of it. But they should come out of a totally different line item. Because that's what that's there for. It has nothing to do with, we're trying to take anything away from you. In fact, on the other contrary, we're trying to save you. Don't use those funds for buildings and grounds and walls, because we, it's a totally different line item, which I thought last year we made pretty clear.
Yeah, you did.
So you're using funds, and that donation is very generous, use it. But don't come to us and say, hey, we got a roof that's down, we need to repair that roof. And that money can be redirected to something else.
And that building has been talked about a lot.
But what I did hear you guys say is, so every year at this time, you guys are running in the negative. And we can't, and you said that's how it's always been done, and that's the problem with balancing a budget. We cannot run in the negative year in and year out and expect it to be.
We're not running in the negative as long as we got the money that's set forward.
Well, but you're paying for next year's fair with the money we're giving you from this year.
I hate to interrupt, but this should have been under, on the agenda in August, as long as it's taken. We've got people out there waiting now.
We do wanna help you. We're just trying to figure out how to get this sorted out so that it equals out. And if you guys are spending money on buildings out there, that's not what you guys.
Friends of Fair, doesn't matter who it is, or county building, that's what the Friends are for. They're out there to build money and make money so that we can improve the fair grounds.
Well, that's fine, but we'll improve the fair grounds with the money that goes to the, that's already been designated to repair the buildings. Use that, let the Friends of the Fair donate to make a better fair with whatever events that you guys are doing. It just, it doesn't balance out, because we're not gonna pay for that stuff. But if we don't know about it, we can't really.
Really, we've gone about, we've talked about and stuff, it's been an ongoing since COVID. And it's something like that.
Well, I was just gonna, can you put this at the end of our day here and visit with them a little bit about what you need?
And what we're going forward. I want this ironed out, that we all know what the budget is.
I do have a question. Aren't, shouldn't those bills just come directly through Becky to be paid?
No, because they didn't want that. They have a checking account for fair that they.
The reason we do that is we can't wait two months to pay someone. When them judges come in, we got this account, and we do the line stuff that we show you. And we write the check for it, we pay them, then we present you at the bottom what we spent.
Well, could you do a line item that says how much you need for each thing, so we can give you money for that?
That's pretty much $10,000. Really, really, that's what it is.
Because we, we don't wanna have to write the checks for the premiums. But that Al that gave our class said we should be doing it all.
I would really believe, put this back on the next agenda and get, let him get what still needs to be paid, a list of, he said there's various things, so that we can know exactly what's going on, and then help him get that straightened out.
But what we're doing is we're zeroing our stuff out, you know, that's what we do.
I get it.
Can you wait till our next meeting to do this?
We'll make it work, I mean, that's where we're at. We'll put it again. But like I say, we need to decide what we're doing going forward, and then that way it goes on forward. If it's July, we're gonna get the budget money to do the fair, that's fine. If you're not gonna allow us to go out and grab the money and bring it in, then we gotta cut back our fund stuff.
We're gonna put this next meeting, or we're gonna do it at the end of this meeting?
I'd say they're already here, let's do it, you guys don't mind.
The other part of the comment. Here, I'll do the question. Stanley Jashinsky, taxpayer, I'm owner. I just wanted to thank the commissioners that took the time on the construction agenda today, to pull things out for over a year now. I've been watching this get, don't take offense, rubber stamp. I have no, as a public, I'm sure nobody knows what any of this is. And so I just appreciate the time, and I hope it happens more in the future. Thank you.
I go along with the first, oh, Dan Fauch, I'm sorry. I just wanna go along with Dan's content, same thing I was gonna say. Thank you for bringing this stuff up, thank you. We gotta stop this go along to get along stuff. And times are approaching us, you know, we gotta start, you know, being a little more active. And secondly, I certainly hope that I see each and every one of you commissioners at the meeting tonight at Senior Center out there. Because I'm certainly expecting you to help protect us and not kiss their butts. Really help us with this. I mean, this is gonna affect a lot of ranchers, hunters, fishers, everybody.
What you get out of playing sports is so much more about life skills and, you know, just becoming stronger as an individual, learning to deal with adversity, learning to approach challenges and taking risks and things like that, you know. And the old adage, we learn more from our mistakes than we do our successes, is certainly true. And, I don't know, Coach Vaughn, I always, he's like, moral victories, he's not a big fan of.
None of us are, but our, but that's what we've spent the last 15 minutes talking about is, is if you're handed a moral victory by guys, you should celebrate it, right?
Exactly, and that's exactly right.
We're not, we're not, I'll leave, if I say sad, you're the live stream. Well, I think the live stream will still go, it's just the background of this.
Yeah. Yep.
You do, however you want to.
Okay. Last one.
Thank you.
Last one. I work that.
Really?
No.
What are these?
I suppose.
Got my head there.
There's no reason.
No, I'll be sorry. Thank you, good idea.
But you have to hold on to your remote. Remember?
Yeah, there's another slot for it.
Thank you.
The slide in there is really.
Bigger version.
Right. I did it. Hmm? I did the last. Right. We failed.
Thank you.
Slide in there that gets kind of small, so it's oversized.
Where'd that go? There.
Thank you. Hi, you want to be up?
You got your mouse? Oh, there you go. Yeah.
It's trying.
You're just gonna have to be out of that chick. Do you wanna talk to the?
All right, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, thanks for having us. We do this every year, as you all know, and White Dot comes around and talks about what we do and future projects coming up. And so, to start off, I'm Scott Taylor, I'm the district engineer for White Dot in District Four, which is northeast Wyoming. Right there shows our district boundaries and what counties we do have, which is all Weston and Crook and most, most, 99% of Campbell, all of Sheridan County, half of Johnson County, a little bit down in the Niobrara County. So. So, what I'm gonna talk about today is what, give an overview of White Dot, our state transportation improvement program, which is a six-year plan for construction projects, many district projects we have, and what our next steps are. Introductions, our White Dot leadership. We have an interim director right now, Darren Westy. I know they had interviews a couple weeks ago, three names were submitted to the governor for permanent. One of them was Mr. Westy. Any day, we should probably hear it on our new, our new directors. Mark Gillette's our chief engineer in Cheyenne, myself, the district engineer here. And our two transportation commissioners, Susan Holmes is the chair of Sheridan, Johnson, Campbell Counties, and Mr. Mark Hughes is for Weston and Crook County. Administrative staff in the district, we have a district maintenance engineer, Larry Knitsky. Isaac Finkler, construction engineer, you mostly get that, and he couldn't make it today. Michelle Edwards is our traffic engineer, and she's here. We have an equipment supervisor, Tim Winslow. Laura Dallas couldn't make it today, she's the one that prepares this presentation and keeps us lined up. We have a safety officer now, Eric Renigan, and HR Jenny Sullivan. And the captain for our district is Ben Schlosser, for Highway Patrol. Weston County locally, for, since last July, so over a year now, we have a vacant resident engineer position after Mr. Leahy left us. So, we do have Josh Junk, who's the resident engineer in Gillette, and he is helping us out tremendously and taking care of the Newcastle and Western County area. And he's here to sit next to Michelle over there. Brad Marchant is our area maintenance supervisor for Crook and Weston. Mr. Guy Phillips is the local foreman here. We do have a shop supervisor, Dean Bethay, covers Crook and Weston. And Joe Lambert, our senior heavy mechanic, comes down from Sundance and helps stop Newcastle here right now. And locally, the lieutenant, the bowmaster is a lieutenant for this area. So, purpose, mission, vision, and values of White Dot. Mostly, I wanna stress, we provide a safe, effective transportation system in our acronym of RIDES, which is to respect, have respect, integrity, dedication, excellence, and of course, safety. White Dot assets. We like to talk about what's out on the roadway, but our largest, biggest assets is our people, okay? It's the people that we have working for us. Which we have over 2,000, 2,047 positions statewide. Right now, there's over 300 vacancies statewide though. In our district specifically, we have 170 positions, and we're a little under 40 vacancies right now. When this was put together, it was over 40, but actually today, August 1st, we got three or four people started. So we're, we're all the way up to about 36, 37 vacancies right now, which is not good. And all of our programs of mechanics, maintainers, the resident engineers like I talked about, and our strippers, traffic folks. So, White Dot assets out on the road. We do have in District Four over 1,250 miles of road. Out of the 6,700 statewide, the 2,000 bridges statewide. Then District Four has a total of 667, 6 bridges, which is the most of any district. Northeast Wyoming has the most bridges in any, of any district in the state. Talk about cost escalations and inflation, how it's affecting everybody around the world, if we know that, or the country, I should say. But a couple years ago, this was our prices on some of our items. Painting was $36 to $45 a ton, it's come in at $65 to $75. The asphalt, the oil in it, the binder, $450 to $600 a few years, a couple years ago now, $9 to $100 to $1,000, and it was as high as $1,500 a ton. Is that still accurate, Josh running around that type? So, that's hurt us bad. Then those other items that are talking about box beam guard rail, structural steel, that's doubled. So because of this, down there on the bottom, we've had to delay about $70 million of projects from fiscal year '23 to '24. You can see the allotments we've been getting from the federal highway administration for federal contracts. And we just, from May on, we had to cancel some lettings, decrease some bid lettings, and so on because of that. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the new federal highway bill came out a couple years ago. They just, this slide's up there to show you what we've been getting every year, and how much, and what's going into the bridges via Bridge Formula Program. We do have some of those in Weston County, and another slide or two will show that. But that 70 million also turned into 100 million in '24, that got delayed to '25 too, so. Bridge Formula Program that I talked about, that's in this federal highway bill. $45 million a year goes to that for the next five years, and which, and I want, this is kind of a wordy slide, but it just talks about the program. And we're gonna start those bridges in 20, I wanna say 2025, 26. But there are two in Weston County, right there highlighted. Down County Road 1A, I guess is where these are at, on Gaver Creek, and then whatever the unnamed draw is. So, Weston County's taking advantage of that. Electrical vehicle charging stations, I did talk about this in the past, and we'll again here. This is still in that federal highway bill. A lot of information there. The requirement's right down there, about a third of the way down, the 50-mile minimum distance between charging stations. Due to that, those type of things, White Dot's trying to slow down on this, pushing this real hard. We're trying to decide if we're gonna take the money or not, or turn it back, just because in Wyoming, it probably isn't too feasible to do this every 50 miles. So, still more to come on that. In that federal highway bill is all kinds of grant opportunities, too many for us to list. So there's the website in your handout that goes over that for all local entities, counties and towns and cities, for competitive federal grants, zero emission vehicles, highway safety, behavioral stuff, aeronautics, and all our local government transportation programs. Supporting programs that we have, financial services down in headquarters, okay? Employee safety, human resources, of course, public affairs. Laura has four counterparts across the state, plus many in headquarters, and local government programs in White Dot. Also in White Dot, we have our engineering and planning, which is our designers for bridge and our contracts and estimates, geologists. Also in White Dot, we have our engineering and planning, which is our designers for bridge, and our contracts and estimates, geologists. Geology's been very busy this year with all the moisture in the spring and early summer, with slides across the district, we have more slides in District Four than anywhere else, too, so. We have our environmental services, that helps keep us out of trouble, and what we're doing there, our lab, telling us how much we're going to put down on the road and stuff like that, okay, local government programs and project development. Also, White Dot has emergency communications, all the wilding towers, our TMC, our dispatch down in Cheyenne for the entire state, and those, all those good apps right there that we get highly used in the wintertime for road conditions. I'd like to talk about Highway Patrol a little bit this year, lots of good information there that I won't go into too detailed, but I do like to talk about the top right, of what we've got going on on our roadways, and locally here, south of Upton, and between Upton and Sundance, right now, we've got some roads starting to fail with all the truck traffic on it, but, statewide, over seven hundred and seventy thousand commercial vehicles, half of those in the last year weighed three hundred and seventy-two thousand, where almost forty thousand, thirty-eight, nine forty-two, were all overweight. So, that's not helping our cause out on the roadways, and if you've drove, drove those routes that I talked about on Highway one sixteen, you'll see where we've had our damage done there. Also aeronautics, all the airports, White Dot has under it, and they have their own programs of engineering, construction, planning, and unmanned aerial systems now, which is drones. Drones are all covered under our aeronautics program now, and is regulated there. Of course, driver's licenses, they also, our driver's services departments are in charge of all the CDLs, compliance investigation, any suspensions or emission in lock stuff, organ donor, and online exam scheduling, and so on. In the district, talked about myself, we have our staff engineers, like I said before, Laura and public relations, safety, and so on, daily operations. Maintenance, maintenance does a lot more than just snow removal, which is obviously the big one, but, right now, we're paving, with our paving crew in the summer right now, we're in the Sheridan area. Fencing, with the winter, we had, all kinds of fence was down because of the snow, still trying to catch up on that, and the mowing right now, if you've traveled anywhere with Clover. So, we're having a heck of a time catching up on our mowing operations right now, and keeping our mowers running because it's so thick and tall. So, we're still working on that, any disaster relief, such as floods and slides and stuff like that, rest areas we have, and all kinds of more facilities under maintenance. Snow control for maintenance, obviously, is thirty-one percent of what our man hours typically we use. Road guide, landscaping, there's your mowing, with nineteen percent, another big piece of the pie, and of course, any other highway asset management and road servicing, are the bigger ones. Traffic, Michelle's program, is responsible for all the striping, reference markers, signals, signs, access permits, safety studies, speed limits, and high mast towers, okay? So, in traffic, White Dot manages all accesses to our highway system. So, if there's any, a permit is required for all new approaches and accesses, if there's a modify, any modification to an existing access, including a fence or gate type, cattle guard, whatever, that has to be approved by us. And if there's any change in land use of an existing access, such as going from residential to commercial, that has to be go through permitting process through us, too. Also in traffic, changing speed limits, we get a lot of requests for changing speed limits. It takes more than just, there's a lot to that, it's not just an overnight thing. The state statute requires us, an engineering study to be done to change speed limits, which has to be approved by our state traffic engineer in Cheyenne headquarters, and of course, our director, okay? So, anybody wants that, then give us a call, and then stick Michelle's, her group on it, and then they go study it, and so on, and so on, okay? Responsible for eleven thousand signs in the district, hundred and forty-five crosswalks, same thing with crosswalks, if that's requested, then that's also got to be engineered, okay? All the traffic signals and the high mast tower lights. Striping trucks only can run eight to twelve miles an hour, anybody that's ever got caught in kind of one definitely knows that. We do refresh all our interstate lines, and yellow center lanes on two-lane roads every year, with those figures there of over seventy thousand gallons of paint, half a million pounds of glass reflecting beams in there. Equipment wise, just want to hit here, we do have eighteen mechanics, when this was made, we were down six, I think we're down five right now. They're district-wide responsible for over roughly seven hundred and eighty items of equipment that we have out there. Talked about Laura does, she does a lot with our construction projects, all the public meetings, public outreach, media, adopt the highway, safety messaging, and so on, parades. Isaac, our construction engineer who couldn't be here today, he has all the resident engineers, such as Josh under him, any other engineers, construction techs, and survey support. So, our STIF, the State Transportation Improvement Program over the next six years, has all, a six-year plan for highway jobs, transit jobs for one year, aeronautic jobs for five-year plan, public safety communication, one-year plan, and any capital improvement projects. Our process is to get inputs for our STIF, which is all our asset management systems of safety, pavement management, and bridge management, okay? April, May timeframe, we get all those candidates together and put all those projects in there that we think are good, are coming up, that we are based off our needs, whether they're enhancement projects, public transit, rail, highway. This timeframe of the year, June to August, we get public input, we come out and give these presentations and talk about what's coming, get input from the public or local entities, and for any transportation projects, aeronautics, and so on. Then in September, that document is prepped and submitted to the Federal Highway Administration and our Transit Authority for approval by our own Transportation Commission on Total One, which is the beginning of fiscal year. Planning phases for that is the development of that, any recon inspections, we need surveying, public input, many design plan sets, engineering studies, final plans and specs, public meetings as appropriate, and then go to contract, and the same type of normal operation there, advertising and awarding and bidding, more public meetings as appropriate. On our website, you can click Go to this map, click on the balloon for each year, pops up, gives a description, scope, location, engineers estimate of the projects for the next six years. Here's an example for Weston County, the red numbers are current projects, and the blue is future of what's on there. So, by county in our district, Weston County is about forty-eight, almost forty-nine million dollars over the next six years going to be programmed for the projects in this area. Of those, we also have some district-wide bridge rehab jobs that cover the entire district for about forty-five million dollars. Every year, we go out and rehab, well, right there, it's listed, sixteen and twenty-four, just one in twenty-five, but it's a big one, six point three million dollars for one bridge, and so on. We also have our contract maintenance projects, and we put out about sixteen million dollars over the next six years, we've got all our chip seals, which has been going on around here, crack seals, any rumble strips, pipe work, and sign upgrades. So, for, oh, I'll take there, I walked, yep, for the projects in Weston County. So, in twenty twenty-four, next summer, we, on Highway Eight-five, we'll have a project for about four hundred thousand dollars to upgrade any, some guard rail out there. And then the big one in this area is Bridge of the Railroad out here south of town, southeast of town, for three point four million, which Weston County's been highly involved with, we got that one going, and it's on schedule, and moving forward to go to bid in July of twenty-four. If that's still late in the year, that'll be need construction in twenty twenty-five construction season, so. Wanted to make sure everybody knows that, okay? Any questions on that project? Since it's been notable, okay? Then twenty-five, on Highway four fifty, the Clerken section, we got about a twelve mile, thirteen point six mile in overlay for nine and a half million. Nothing scheduled in twenty-six, but that always changes. And then twenty-seven, quite a few jobs there, Sundance, Upton, Weston County line, for almost six miles for four million dollars. County Road One, the Commission Road Improvement Program project that we have with you folks, it says nine hundred thousand, that was before the scope has changed, and was as requested. And before, it was going to be a full-depth reclamation, overlay with some isolated reconstruction, now, we need to get a new agreement going with Weston County, because it's going to be basically full-blown reconstruction, pipe work, paved, and unless, we get difference of action from you folks, but we really need to start moving on that. And that job will go to three million plus with that scope change. And that's, that's a ninety-ten split, so ten percent matched by the counting on that. So, just want, any questions on that, comments, soak that in, was everybody aware of the scope change, okay? And then those BFP bridges I talked about, the Beaver Creek one, that's the one that's burned down, I believe, is that right, Josh? And that's a replacement for four point six million, that's dollars that year. Twenty twenty-eight, Black Tail Creek, Newcastle, Black Tail Creek, almost fourteen miles for ten million dollars. Then in twenty-nine, on Highway sixteen, Upton to Osage, west here, for almost fifteen million dollars for twelve point three million dollar millimeter level, twelve point three mile millimeter level and overlay job. One of those projects delayed that I talked about earlier, is one has been Wyoming sixteen, Upton South, for a little over ten million dollars, so. Any questions on any of those?
Just one was delayed, is that coming up, off the table totally, or?
No, no, Mr. Chair, that's just outside of our six-year plan, we didn't have the money to put it in twenty-nine or twenty-eight or whatever, so, next year, it'll probably be in whatever, twenty-thirty or something, so, not off the table, none of these are. Yes?
When these projects are put out for bid, is, is there a deadline, is it like August first, before they can be approved for that, that year's cycle? You were talking about the, it's going to be put out for bid later in the year, until the project won't be completed or started until twenty-five?
Right, and another reason it won't start till twenty, just because of winter work, it'd be more expensive, too, you know, they'll start in the spring, and then there are significant lag times on structural steel delivery, okay? And also, at that same time, we have, on one of our bridge rehab jobs, we're replacing the deck on the railroad bridge south of town, right here on Eeyah. So, having both of those go on at the same time, we don't want to do, because when the bridge is replaced over the railroad on the county road, there is no detour there. That will be closed off, and people will be having to go around, and we don't want both of those closed off, or delays on both, how's that for that at the same time? And I think I answered your question, as far as, is there a timeline, we have a letting every month?
Right, you were talking about the bid process is going to be later in the year, that the construction wouldn't be, and we're noticing that with the airport as well. It seems like August first is kind of the, if the bids aren't open by August first, or open to bidding by then, you're looking at the, at the next, the next year bill.
Correct, and, and, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, quite honestly, especially with our bridge contractors, we don't have a whole lot in Wyoming, so it turns into a manpower thing and availability for the contractor to get started, you know, so throw that factor in there, too. So, we work with our contract completion dates and set up our project timelines to try and accommodate that kind of stuff, too. Yep, any other questions? So, this is the end of it here, but contact White Dot, learn about all this stuff, what we do, funding our projects, you can go on our webpage there, see our STIF, put, give feedback to the public or local communities would like to see in it, proposed projects, and so on. We do have, I didn't mention their names at the beginning, but two assistant chief engineers, Keith Fulton's in charge of engineering and planning, so basically, a whole lot of design stuff, and my supervisor, Tom DeHoff, is the assistant chief engineer of operations. And then Sarah Ellis is the local government coordinator, which Weston County and the city of Newcastle know her well because of those local government programs, so. There it is, any other questions or comments? Mr. Chair, Commissioner?
I just want to continue to say, I think that the group in Weston County, their shop, the facilities, they have done an excellent job, they continue to do an excellent job, and I appreciate all their hard work and their commitment to them, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Chair, we appreciate that, we don't get a whole lot of positive feedback, it's rare, how's that? Well, we hear the other stuff, but, so, thank you. Maintenance wise, we are down one, and construction wise, we are down bad, of course, not the resident engineer, and right now, we have three permanent people on the crew, one part-time person, and then three permanent people on the crew is out of a six-person crew, seven, counting the resident engineer. One maintenance worker short, construction is where we're down really bad, yeah, so, with the construction. Josh is putting on plenty of miles and plenty of hours, helping us out, covering Campbell, we got the same thing as Paul in Crete right now, Keith, as you do with your assistants.
The legislature talked about raising wages for you guys, that help fill in some of the spots?
I think it will, I'm being optimistic, you know, we got two, two Julys back-to-back here, in my thirty years, for guys that have been around for a while, we've never seen those kind of raises, and especially in back-to-back years, we've never had that. So, this year in our district, we got about, on average, what was it, eight point three five percent raise for all our employees, I think that's going to help, and it should, I hope. But, if you've been catching up on any maintenance or anything lately, I've been quoted, you know, our, our maintenance, let's just say our snowplow drivers, and our construction workers, you know, they're getting whatever, twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour, they can go to the private industry for double that, and we just can't compete, so. But, the raises that we did receive from the legislature are much appreciated, it's definitely going to help us out, so.
Have any questions, comments, Scott?
Okay, we thank you for your time, every year, so, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We'll get out of your hair, continue on, I hope I didn't mess up your live streaming here.
Hello, I'm Vicki Hayman with the Weston County Extension, and Abby's last day happened to be yesterday, July thirty-first, so, we have advertised the position, and we would like to contract with her, and this document that I shared with you was prepared by Jeannie Stone. And so, we would like to bring her back for some days to train our new assistant to help us out, so, we were wondering if you would give your approval. I don't think we'll be asking for any additional money, it should work out within the line item of salary, because by time the, the span of doing the interviews and the actual hiring and getting them into the office, so, I just was wondering if we could have approval to contract with someone, me and Abby, when the new person is hired. And if you don't want me to do it, I have one with, that you could do chairman head, or, you know, Jeannie said either way will work. That was the advice I was given, so.
What is the dollar amount?
I was going to give her the nineteen dollars an hour, which she was earning when she quit, which was the new one, too, bottom two.
She would just run it through accounts, payroll, she might be able to run it through payroll, because she's a longer employee, but it would just have to be?
Yeah, last time, it was flip-flop, because Kara, or not Kara, Krista was still before, so we contracted with the new person.
We have to run it through as like a voucher, because we can't run it as payroll, because she's not a full employee, you just put the one item, your employee line item, and then it just gets put in as a voucher, that way, none of the other stuff is taken out, so it just runs.
And then you want a timesheet also, which is we put in here?
Yeah, just, so it's just like, just like if she was a cleaning person, it's just ran through that, okay?
Okay.
Expecting how many hours?
You know, I don't, I would say at the max, forty, but I don't know that it would take that long, five days is what I'm thinking, but, it just depends on their skill set and what their knowledge base is. Because the computer programs, some of them are pretty universal and Because the computer programs, some of them are pretty universal and some are very specific to horage and what we do, yes.
And you mentioned this is already within, you've got this figured out within your budget?
Yes.
So we, we'll be without a secretary at minimum, like three weeks. So we'll, I mean, that's already sitting there. We're just hoping that we can have her come back and train and like teach them how to do vouchers and some of that stuff.
Overall budget, you know, the opening?
No.
Lord's pleasure. To accept them getting temporary employment contract agreement with the former employee for the time necessary within the budget. Starting whenever.
Yes, we don't know, we don't know yet. Yeah, applications are due today for our opening positions.
I second that.
This contract right here doesn't have all the information in it?
No, because we don't know it just yet.
I guess I would, would it be up? For the motion maker to allow the chairman's signature when the contract is presented?
Do you want it? Do you want one with your name on it? Chairman, or one with my name? It doesn't matter, just so.
It doesn't matter, I mean, that way allow, I guess if you run it through your office, it doesn't even need to be my signature or your signature.
If we run it through my name, it'd be my signature. If you want to run it through your name, we'll change it and it'll be your signature. However, words best for.
Lord's pleasure, I would adjust the motion to allow the extension office, Vicki, to sign the agreement.
You didn't get the second?
I second.
Any other discussion?
This is on a five days, you said, Vicki?
Max, I would say max five days.
Do you want to incorporate that with your motion?
Yeah, to go no longer than five days, I said within, within the budget.
So I have moved to approve contract, moved to approve the extension office to contract Abby, we need to train new extension office employees for a maximum of five days.
At nineteen dollars an hour?
Yes.
No, it's all cut in black and white, there's no. Any other discussion? During that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, amen.
Thank you very much, we appreciate, and we'll let you know when we have a new hire, so. Thank you.
That was good, thanks Vicki, thanks, Erin.
Yep, thank you guys.
Thank you. Next up is Henry. Chamber update.
Good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
Well, actually, asked me on the schedule, number one, to thank you all for your support of the Chamber of Commerce. Your quarterly donation will be very helpful. I just want to get an idea of where our money was gonna be going this year and hopefully projects were able to complete. Currently, our chamber is being run one hundred percent by volunteers. Now, I'm lucky that it was hard to get the first volunteer to come in and sit the chamber open, but Monday mornings, I have a gentleman by the name of Barry, who is coming in and sitting down and keeping our building open. Other times, I'm sitting there. And I sit there as much as I can, but I still have a business to run and personal business to handle. But I will say that in sitting there, we get about a dozen people through there on the days I sit. And it's rather amazing, some just come in quickly, grab maps and run. Others actually ask questions, want to know where can they get a hotel room, ask them what type are they looking for? Where can they get a meal? What type are they looking for, sit down fast, et cetera? And I start trying to guide them and see how they do. So hopefully, we're bringing some of that business into the town itself and into the area. When we're not there, the travel commission has set up a bin outside. And we have bags of information that they can pick and take with them. So far, over two hundred bags have been distributed. And there's still a lot more to go, this is just the beginning of August. Now telephone, that age-old complaint that's been going on even before I got there, that the phone at the chamber is not being answered. Well, I can honestly say for the past several months, the phones have been forwarded either to my phone or to another board member's phone, and the phones are getting answered and questions are getting answered. I will say this, some folks have called as early as six AM, others have called as late as midnight. And the phone still gets answered and questions get answered. So we're really trying to increase that servicing. On money, one of the biggest things we need to do and to improve is our advertising. But our budget is extremely limited in this area. We're reliant on our member dues, the funding we receive, the oil part of it, and also the travel commission for funding for advertising. And the tight dollars means we have to work very wisely as to where we're gonna advertise and how. My personal plan, which I still need to put in front of the board, is to do two different target groups of advertising. The in-town for local shopping, because we need to reinforce and regain trust in the local area. Then also the out-of-the-area, where we can try to target those coming in for events such as Sturgis, which is the next big one coming up. And most of that advertising is going to be a combination of print and electronic media, hopefully. I do have a setback. On July twenty-sixth, my internet's, not my service provider, but my web hosting provider has suddenly ended their relationship with. So I'm looking for a new web hosting provider, and at this time, our website is dead. And I do not want it to stay down too long, so I'm concentrating on that. Other areas that we are gonna have to use funding in is the, is the chamber building. Now, in the world I came from, fire service and also the federal government, we had a saying, which was very interesting. Lieutenant once told me this, if you look good, you are good. Well, our building needs a little work on it. We've got some rotten siding and one day I walked up to the door and a piece of wood had actually fallen outside the building, which I picked up and threw away, so we need to do some repairs to the building. Those buildings, those repairs are primarily aesthetic. But the huge amount of rain we've had lately, I'm getting a lot of rain wash that goes under that prefabricated building. And what is occurring is the left front corner of the building is being washed out underneath and the building has tipped. So I'm gonna have to look at, for a contractor that could potentially, within our budget, be able to re-support that side of the building. If you were to drive by there now and drive to the back of the building, you'll actually see the bloods on the reins on the wheel. So these reins are great, but they also do their damage. We have activities that we've supported. We're having to do less, but I hope we're doing it better or doing it well. The first is the fireworks. The, in February, the fire department came to us and asked us to assist them with fundraising. And so working closely with them, our goal was to raise fifteen thousand dollars. That was not our final amount that we raised, but we raised a note that I hope you all enjoyed the show. Something new that happened with fireworks this year, I think you noticed, is there's now an electronic firing system. And that allowed for the differences in the type of show, especially on the lower fireworks where you saw the moving type. So we've already started the fundraising for next year. We did that at the fairgrounds on Pig Wrestling Day. Now, our first attempt is a little feeble, but we'll keep going. Because we need to go back and try to get that fifteen thousand for next year and try to do it over a long period of time. Another item that we supported, the Easter Fair, which was also completely funded by the Newcastle Logical Convention Center. They funded the space, they funded the table space, they funded food. But the money that was brought in, one hundred percent went toward the fireworks, so that was very helpful. I try to attend travel commission meetings as much as possible, and that's because they are a huge source of funding for advertising. And any money we receive from them is fenced for just advertising, it's not used for any other item. I'd like to thank, right now, since we've got members of the fair board here, the fair board and the work they did to help us put on the parade and pig wrestling. I've heard nothing but positive things about the pig wrestling, some folks really enjoyed it, others were like, hey, that was pretty good. But I haven't had nothing really negative, so that's very nice to hear. Now, other activities to come, again, I've talked about the continued fireworks funding. Something I'm looking at for October will be Halloween on Main Street. And in November is the annual meeting of the chamber. December will be the lighted parade. So those are actual street activities. I'm gonna bring up an old subject, something I brought up a few months ago, and that was economic development. Because I had been approached by one of the city councilmen to ask Sprint the Armory if they have been like in Newcastle or at least in the Weston County area. And when I spoke to you all about it, I was asking about potentially what would we be willing to do? Because economic development needs to be a partnership. And so I'm gonna ask and let you all think about it. Should we or can we appoint a small three-person group just to look into economic development and try to make a plan that would satisfy chamber, city, and county? So one representative for each, just to sit down and come up with a route and present it to the three bodies to try to see how we can work economic development. I know economic development, when I look at the websites and talk with the state, Chamber of Commerce, that is their big thing, economic development. But I also know here, we need to bring in tourism dollars, we need to bring in travel dollars. And so that's gonna require advertising, not just economic development, because those are short-term, economic development is long-term. So I'd like to ask you all to think about that and see if we can come up with something where we can make a rough point, half a page or full page, doesn't matter. And if you have any other comments or suggestions, I'm willing to hear as the life of the big, any questions?
First off, thank you for the update and the progress that the chamber seems to make forward now. Great, appreciate you.
Thank you, we're, we have two, one more thing, we have two openings on our board, we're taking other patients. Well, thank you very much for your time.
I participated in the parade and also the pig wrestling, and I thought you guys did an amazing job this year. I knew, talking to you on the front side, you were a little nervous maybe on a number of teams and things like that, but it kind of, it does come to, come to grips once you had some later entries and whatnot, it turned out really good. Another thing on economic development, personally, you might want to chat with also is Matt Ramsey. I know Matt Ramsey and Darwin were, were working together with some economic development, I don't believe. I think it was more of a personal, though I don't know what they created themselves, but might be somebody to touch base with in that department. Just to find out what they, some of the challenges that they had and, you know, save it sometime.
All righty, I'm glad I know personally Darwin, I met, he used to own the house I live in.
Okay.
Or I had somebody that just went away. All right, well, again, I thank you all very much. I, oh yes, I mentioned it to vacancies, so I think that's it.
Thank you.
You all stay safe.
Next is own business. Improve and maintain current roads and lookout mountain subdivision. If you hear we got a copy of the petition, someone's running that. Do not. That'd be approved and closed out there. You guys here are with the lookout mountain subdivision? I guess that's what we're called. That's what it is officially on the paper as.
Well, I would like to ask the county attorney, the last time you were here, he said he would people look into any possibility of funding for the road. Did you find any?
That was our understanding when I left, that you were gonna check into it, have you had the time to do that?
I've, I've tried to connect with the Mr. Baron up in Crook County, and we haven't been able to connect with one another yet, but I have, I have reached out.
The only thing I have found out in it, because of the strange wording of the road that goes up there, it's a private road over private easement, no funding available for it, and yet it's accessible for the county, or for.
Weston County residents.
For Weston County residents, so, you know, it's open to the public. And the RAC committee, which is resource advisory committee that we worked with before, was from the Forest Service, so that was out. But we attached BLM, at the end of, what, State.
State Bureau.
Runs right into BLM. And BLM does have some advisory committees, RAC advisory committees throughout the state. And I've been trying to find out if we can get funding through them because it's an access, a road access to recreation. But a lot of this is gonna depend on what happens. Tonight, we're going to that meeting on BLM, and they're talking about closing to recreation, hunting, fishing, the whole lot yards. So we don't know whether they would even consider funding, probably not at this point. But it was worth a try, and we're gonna find out if we can get more information on that. Otherwise, we don't fit any category that I could find, you know, that would give us the money, that's where we are now.
For everybody's clarification, the reason we're trying to go through this RAC, Resource Advisory, in Montana, where we live, we had a similar situation. Forest Service road over private land into a neighborhood. The county, the Park County Commissioners were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the federal government for improvement of whatever through this RAC committee, that's why we're trying to do this. The county didn't try to take over the road because it was Forest Service. When they awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we made our application on what it would do for the neighborhood. Safety, emergency access, ease of customer, of residents. We got one-third of that from the county. That's what we're trying to get together with you guys on, is to do this. And to do this, we've got to work with the BLM. And just for your information, we didn't make copies because we didn't know what you guys were into and not into. But here's an advisory of what a RAC committee is, and I can leave this with Becky if you want to make copies. This is where they say the BLM is getting money for a muddy block of mountain road and so forth and so on. I think that that's the approach that we need to try to take.
The money comes from the federal government and it comes down to the, to the county, you know.
But it can't come direct to us, it has to come through.
We have to administer.
You, that's correct, sir. So it comes down to what you find out, and are we interested in doing this? Are you interested in helping the community? We gotta find that out.
Trish Fowman. Last time we were here, co-chairman Nathan said something about us becoming a county road. And that there were steps to be taken that we could maybe be a county road, which was the avenue I was pursuing. It doesn't have to be like a super maintained, like you do Salt Creek or something, but.
Yeah. Yeah, did you guys, you got a petition signed concerning the neighbors out here? Did you sign that?
Uh, no.
County-wise, I think it just takes too long to get everybody...
So is this not the other access off the highway that we aren't even pursuing?
This is...
Jamie Lynn and Deborah are not part of our petition? Do you know, Mike? Jamie Lynn and Deborah are the other access where Serkiel lives?
Yes.
So they aren't part of our petition, because they're different access off the highway, just so we're clear on that.
They're both part of the same subdivision.
Yeah.
It's all the same subdivision.
Different subdivisions.
But they're different access from...
Different access off the highway.
Different access road off the highway.
But it is the same subdivision.
They don't want any part of it.
No.
They don't want no part of it.
Yeah, and we were aware that they didn't want any part of it, is why we made our petition that east access.
Okay. For the main, for the main part of the thing, for the whole, I should say, the subdivision out there, except for that little one. They don't want no part of it.
Michael, have, have you looked into the statutes regarding the possibility of being county road?
Yeah, I don't think you can, the statute, the way it's written, I don't think you can convert the subdivision private to a county, because, I mean, I wish it could. I mean, for your guys' sake, but I mean, it's just not the purpose.
So that's the state statute?
Yeah, it's not the, it's in Title 24, so I don't think that's the purpose behind the statute. And then, you know, just the public policy, I mean, if, if anybody has any differing views on that statute, that's fine, but it's, I mean, the public policy, I mean, it could be like a downhill slide if every subdivision can just...
Well, I find this, excuse me, I find this unique in that we're, we're public access and we access BLM. We are, we are unique in that way. The other subdivisions aren't stated public access, and they aren't, they don't access public land.
I think your co-chairman recognized that it was a unique situation, but I think it starts with, I know you didn't get anywhere this time with reaching out, but we need to find out what other funding could be available through your connection, and that we would, you know, start there. We, I brought up the Title 24 when I talked about it last time, and that was ruled out simply, I mean, I read it when I read it the first time, I thought maybe there was a possibility, but there wasn't. So it's not to put you guys off, it's, it's exactly that, it's a unique situation, and I think co-chairman Todd was expressing that it's kind of unknown to us what, what we can do there, so.
And I'm sure once I connect with, I'm sure he, he just has so much knowledge that he's been around so long that I'm sure once, I can't say I'm sure, I have a good feeling that once I get to connect with him, we'll, we'll have some better ideas.
David Franz, I wonder what the city of Newcastle did when they took over, they've expanded their boundaries and, and took over private roads and made them city streets.
I know in the past they've done, I lived on a street that was gravel, they basically did an improvement district, you got that paved and all the tax, all the residents were assessed, the city funded them, burned the money, and then you got your, an assessment on your taxes to help pay for the, to offset, is how we, that a street that needs...
And I'm, I'm not, I don't have really deep understanding of the law, but as a county, we have to follow state statutes, and cities can actually implement some of their own, their own laws as a municipality. So we're kinda, we're, we're kinda stuck right there.
Would you have looked into that rack? That, that might be a way to get some funding for it.
Well, what we did when we got the money, we hired local, you know, to come in and do...
The physical work.
The physical.
Well, we can look into it a little further, but what we need to know is on this thing, are you guys interested? I'm not clear that I'm getting that feeling.
Well, I can't speak for the whole board, but I think if, if there was funding, I think, I don't think the county would have trouble administering it, you know, where it's not money coming out of our general fund.
I agree with Chairman. We're definitely interested, we just have to follow, you know, follow the line.
No, I understand.
And go through that. If there's more information that, that can help us process this decision, we're certainly open to hear it. I think we need more information, which isn't to try to push a problem down the road, it's, we need to, in this particular case, we probably need to kick it down the road a little bit until we, we're, we're trying to reach out and get the information that we need to help you guys and help us make a decision that's within our, our rules, so.
Just for clarification, it feels like we got a couple different things going on here. Are we still pursuing that to be a county road?
I would be interested if that's possible. And everyone who signed the petition, that was part of the letter, my original letter to them was, we may become county easements, and everybody signed with those words, so, yeah.
And that will be, and then separate from that was the funds that you were looking to acquire, administered, it being administered through the commission from federal sources.
I think we're trying to hold two doors open.
Okay.
And one, the one that gets slammed first, shot. We'll build the other way. I'm just trying to be honest.
Couple options there, though.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought that we ruled out that it's not a possibility to become a county road, or is there?
Not, not the way that, no, I don't believe Title 24 allows for that.
And so that, that door is closed, isn't it? We just need to go through the options on funding the road to get gravel and to get it cleaned up, so I don't wanna lead you guys down the wrong path, but there's still a door open, because my understanding is, is that there isn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna, we have one-way road to pursue then, and that is through the RAC. Or, or connection he has, our county attorney has, to see if there's some positive funding ideas, now that can help with that, is where I think we, we are at. Am I speaking?
Right. I mean, yeah, he's, yeah, I'm, he has so much knowledge, I'm sure, that something that all of us don't know about is out there. And we, yeah, we just, we really do want to...
Is it possible for one of us to recapt to him, or is it, that he's too tied up? I know you have a million things on your plate.
I mean, I just, I'm waiting to call back.
You're waiting for, yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
So good.
The road district that we were talking about here a couple months ago, Mike, is this, this is different than, than what we were discussing there? That was more of a, like, community-based road district, is that...
Correct.
Okay.
But it included the whole subdivision.
Okay.
Custer Highlands is like that. But talking to my neighbor, he, they tried to pursue the same type of thing, they started a subdivision just south of Frontier Edition. And they all, they, they all looked at him like he had three heads when he brought up that type of thing, so I don't think, I don't think it's a Wyoming thing. Apparently, South Dakota is very common, because all those subdivisions between, well, Custer Highlands, and there's a ton of them around Custer and Hill City, and they're all kinda run the same way, but it's all through the, through the courthouse. They basically assess, or you decide what you, how much you want, everybody contributes, and it, it's just added onto your taxes. The courthouse collects it, puts it in an escrow account at the bank, but you have to have structured meetings, elected officials, and all of that stuff to go with it.
That, that would be more like an improvement district, probably, because they'll collect, they assess on your taxes, and then it gets paid off over a period of time.
Yeah, I guess that, you can set the amount, it's, it's not a, it's not, the county doesn't set the amount.
Yeah, it's, it's not based on mil, and...
No.
It's based on the dollar amount, and then the time changes.
So, I mean, based on the amount of, there's way more lots out in Custer Highlands than everybody thinks, but, but there's also twenty-some miles of road, too. But, yeah, it's not a, the only thing the county's involved in is basically collecting it through the taxes and depositing it in the bank, and it's all, it's all through the state, it had to be a state, the original meeting and the election had to be through the state officials there to actually get the thing started, but it's just kind of an automatic thing now, so.
Mark Moore here. If that's way, you know, we have to pay double then, we paying taxes on our property to get roads fixed and everything else, why can't they take the money out of that to put in to that something like that, instead of we paying twice on our taxes? You know what I'm saying on that?
Yeah.
I mean, why do we have to pay for that money to have somebody fix our road, which that money that we're paying property taxes on should be paying for that, for that problem? So if they're gonna, if you, they're gonna do that, take the money out of them taxes and put it into that fund? Can they do, can they do that?
I'm not aware of it.
You know? I'm, dude, I'm just saying, why do we gotta pay twice then? You know?
I'm in the same boat.
I know.
That's at the, that would be at our legislative level, it's not at a county level. Those, those statutes are not, I mean, some of those, we follow those same statutes. So that's a, that's a great question for your representatives at that level, and, and we'd like to know the answer to that, too.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of those rules that we just, we have no control over, and we scratch our head over them as well, but that's what level that would be at.
So what Mike's talking about is like some of our improvement districts that have set up their own water systems, essentially?
Yeah.
Like, you know, Salt Creek Waters, Sunset Water, where they've, they've actually set up their own district with a special tax.
Yeah.
I, I've not heard of a road going around here, but I, I imagine it can be done in Wyoming, can it?
Well, I, I think would have to be like, Casio's agents got their improvement district, or it, something like that, or...
Josh had lawyers and everybody else in, because that's what he wanted to do up here, but they basically just wrote it into the, the, the ownership of the lots, when you buy the lot, you agree to donate to the, a certain amount, yeah.
Basically put a covenant on their...
Right.
On their deed.
Yeah.
Seeing all the people out there don't want covenant, they don't want anything like that.
That's why you live out there.
That's why we live out there, and that.
It, it has its advantages, it just...
Yes, it does, sir.
But the thing it would eliminate would be going around with your handout every year to say...
Yeah, that's for sure.
Hundred bucks, two hundred bucks?
Yeah.
To fix this or fix that, or, and it's like, you know? And you get about 15% participation.
And if, if that, if that.
I'm just centered on the uniqueness. We are open to the public, and we access BLM. We, we are unique in that way, and I just can't believe there's not some way that we can have some help when you got everybody and their dog that can drive out there.
I'm on the same line. I wanna, I, I maintain a mile of road up to my place.
But is it open to the public?
Yes, because they're state land, and it is Hollywood, Hollywood and Vine, but that first mile I maintain on my own.
Me, too.
So, yeah, you're in true.
So it's not a uniqueness?
No, it's not a unique thing, it's all over the place. Thank you. Just if you guys continue to look into that rack, and then if Michael can do anything, you know, send, send dance, so.
We can, okay.
Yeah, well, it's something we're gonna keep looking into, Michael keeps updated on whatever he finds.
Could we keep in touch with Michael?
That wouldn't be a bad thing.
Make him know if he finds anything.
That's fine.
I'd say touch with Michael, because he'll be the first to know, to know.
If we make N-words, who do we contact? Him?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'd still like to be Captain Malute, so we don't, we don't want you guys to feel like we're pushing you aside, we're not. We'd like to know the information and not just, one of these days, we're, we're trying to get it looked at.
I guess, for a little clarification, do you, is this, this board pretty much in the absolute decision to administer it if they come up with the money from the feds? Absolutely. So, they'll have our commitment on there, if, if you can get the money to that rack, we'll...
It depends on the same thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Next is volunteer board discussion.
I brought it up last time, just so you could be thinking about it while you're here.
No.
Now you can think about it. Um, I've, during our board training, and I've actually had some other board members come up to me and say, you know, there's never been a commissioner come to any of our meetings. And when I was, not this year, but the first year I went to Cheyenne, to the WCCA meeting, talking to other commissioners, most counties have liaisons go to their volunteer board meetings, and a liaison is just someone who communicates back and forth, there's no micromanaging, it's just a matter of communication between the boards. We put those people on those boards, and then we just kind of forget about them and hope they're doing their job and everything's going well. I think it's part of our job to represent the commission, commissioners, and go visit those board meetings, to have open communication with any questions or problems they have. And I, I would like to set us up a schedule, if you would allow it for us, to at least one of us go to every board meeting at least once a quarter, and report back to the board in our meetings. I think after public comment, we could actually have a place called Commissioner Comment, where we could let people know where we've been, which board, which boards we went to visit, what they have going on, and it would be a matter of communication to the public, it would help those boards get out what they're doing and what their concerns are, what, what they're getting done for everyone, because it's all silent, really, right now, there's no communication between, these boards do their job, and nobody really knows what they're doing, and that's not fair to them either, they, they work hard at these jobs, so it'd be nice if we had a communication back and forth, and for us to help do that. I don't know what everybody else thinks about.
I'm not totally against it, you know, it's, I guess, some of my concern would be is that if, if a board thinks we're trying to micromanage, we need to definitely get that out there to them, but that's not, not what we're trying to do, you know?
We would be a vistor to their board, and there to, to help be, if they have concerns that we need to know about, we're not there to tell them what to do, we're there to learn what they're doing. And I, I've, I've just had so many people tell me that they'd appreciate that. I went to Gilbert's meeting the other day, and he appreciated that I went, and, and I think that's part of our responsibility, to know what's going on.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Hugger. I think we've seen it just in the past couple of years, with the result of not trying to give the impression of micromanaging, and it's resulted in a lack of communication. And the old saying goes, if you keep on doing what you've always done, you're gonna keep on getting what you always got. So even change is a great thing, because change can always be changed back, so trying something new, I don't think is unreasonable, nor is it a, a bad idea to try it out, and if it doesn't work, or it gets to be that, it's considered micromanaging, and then we can change it, but I also think that the concept of micromanaging is, there's nothing wrong with helping and being an advocate for the board, and that is, if that's considered micromanaging by board, then I would say we have the wrong board.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Bureau 100%, we would never take this micromanaging. I mean, if we have issues, I mean, at least you're, instead of like me talking to you here today, I take it back to the board, we got the commissioner there to, to help us. And we also need that, that reassurance that if we're doing something wrong with our meetings, you guys are well more trained than what we are, we need to change how we're conducting our meetings and, and, and getting everything done. We need to change how we're conducting our meetings and, and, and getting everything done. And I thi, I think it's awesome, I would love to have it. I think it's, I don't know of anybody that ever said no to it, and I don't feel it would ever be micromanaging.
Well, I'm sorry, I also feel that, I think Bureau's made it clear that we're not really there to, I mean, in English, we're there to listen, to see what the needs are and report back to the board and say, you know, this is what's going on, maybe we can help in this area or that area. The boards, I think, would have to be careful about, uh, requesting things from that liaison, because that liaison would be one of five. And, and I don't think that they would, but I, I just think that would be something that, you know, sometimes listening is, is just as informative and, and important as, as talking, so we'd basically just be seeing how things are going and relaying back information.
And, and we, and we may have, have, have questions, because, I'll be honest with you, you guys all know Newcastle. We hear all kinds of stuff second and third hand. And it, you know, wouldn't be that bad to say, hey, what did you, we, we heard this, is that what you guys are talking about? You know, instead of us sitting here wondering, do we dare bring it up or something like that to you folks, but I, I, I think it's awesome. I, I would definitely vote for it.
Well, I, and I would be willing to, um, Becky's already got me some of the information on the board, how many of the people on the board reach out, see when they're having meetings, um, get all that information together, get it out to all our commissioners and then let you decide which ones you'd like to go to, because some things may interest you. Garrett's already on the airport board, so you could, um, not that we couldn't go visit, but you could report back to us um, at least to a quarterly basis, what's going on and, and, um, if you wanted to or if you wanted somebody else to go, but you know what I mean, I, I think you're on the solid weeks history. Uh, same thing, maybe that's, maybe that's something that we could come visit though. But you could report to us on that and, and just open up more communication on what these boards are doing and get out the good things they're doing and make ourselves more available for questions and concerns that we might need to help them address.
I agree with the, the communication side of it, like there's, there's never a time when improved communication is a bad thing. Like, it's going to help us out in so many ways. One thing that I do look at is that we do have monthly meetings with department head reports and if those updates are, are properly addressed, we are going to naturally get quite a few of those updates from the departments. If they, if they're here or on the agenda or they do their, their updates, but the inside with the communication and the, um, the working along with those separate departments, that's where, that's where the communication really improves, because what I've noticed is, is say, for instance, if a commissioner has never gone to a meeting, the first time you show up, everybody in the meeting is nervous. They're like, oh man, you know, uh, I went to a meeting one time, they said, are you, are you here to raise hate and discontent? Which I wasn't, but that can be the initial. So with, with continued association and, uh, and attendance of, of those meetings and working along with those people, um, not just hammering up on the, uh, on the meetings that they have, but taking some of the, the, the board members aside and uh, getting to know them and talking on a personal note, that does improve a lot. That way they're more comfortable in, in discussing things rather than the spotlight getting put on them at the commissioner meeting and, and sometimes things don't come out the same way.
Well, it sounds like something they can move forward with and?
Well, uh, with that then I would, um, move that we go forward and make a commitment to have participation in volunteer board and possibly special district meetings at least once a quarter. And I will volunteer myself to work up schedule and phone numbers and meeting times and get it out to you and then you can let me know when you'd like to go, what's good for, uh, which we all have busy schedules too, so if we can make it work with our schedules.
I guess, you don't want to do that, do a, um, like a spreadsheet or something with,
Yeah.
this is, this is the board, this is when they meet and kind of like assign that sheet.
Right. And whenever, when you're available, then, and then we can, you know, I'd like to visit all the boards eventually and I think we all should, so.
I would second that.
Got a motion, brought the second to, I guess, move forward with the sign-up sheet for volunteer board?
And commit, and commit ourselves to doing quarterly visits to our boards.
Any other discussion? Babe, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Keep watch. Got it.
I got it.
Next is board of equalization update.
No, 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 Vera asked to add hiring freeze email to all business.
Oh, no, we scratched that.
Oh, you already scratched that?
Michael already addressed.
Well, I was gonna say, Michael already addressed the board of equalization, so.
I forgot about this one. The, you know, we talked about the hiring freeze that ended off because our budget's so tight last time and we asked Becky to send out an email letting people know that they needed to come to us. And it, I don't think we gave enough information in the email and there's, I think there was some, um, miscommunication or people didn't understand what we were requesting, so I just think maybe we need to send another email just explaining a little bit more, it's okay, you have it in your budget, it's okay, all of those things. Um, because I had a couple of people get real upset about it, we're not freezing, you know, like Vicki having to have someone right away, um, she already has it in her budget. The only difference would be if, uh, the person she has now is a single covered insurance. If she hires someone who has a family covered, she would need to come to us. So I think we need to give a little bit more information, so it's, so everybody doesn't think that they can't hire someone if they lose a person.
Right.
Yes.
It's no new position.
All my dad was put the motion.
Yes, so if you would just explain a little bit more detail and resend it, I'd appreciate that.
Change to your budget and going to affect what maybe their?
Benefits, et cetera. Right.
I, I agree with Commissioner Huber, uh, that confusion also came out with the library. We clearly stated that every current level would be maintained, that it's additional hiring. They were concerned that when they hired somebody, you know, would they get their insurance or whatever. We, we're not trying to change anybody's, uh, j- job description or how many hours they work, there's no approval necessary for that. It was just, if anything changes with current levels of hiring, we need to hold off on that one and have the boards approve it.
Not for sure where the word freeze came in, I, I don't remember that in the motion, but it was, uh, needed to be gone through the, the board of commissioners for approval.
Yep.
So we just, we just need to make it clear, so I,
A better explanation.
I move to request Becky to send out an additional email just to make it clear what we're talking about. So there's no misunderstandings.
I'll second that. New email clarifying the, uh, job freeze question.
Question.
Question. Is there any other discussion? Hearing them all a little better, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No votes say nay. Motion carried. We have executive session up next, but do we want to bump the fair board between that and the executive session?
It looks good.
Yep.
Floor looks good. Where do you want it to go? Do you want to, do you want to try and convert this to where you pay us at the end of the, the fair and we carry that through the next phase?
Just back up a little bit, I think you've got a, an option already in place for like your entertainment, so that money can stay separate. Because we've been asking you guys for years, your donations go into the Friends of the Fair, not into your budget. Comes into your budget, then it automatically, then it kind of comes into our general fund. If your donations for entertainment, if that's made for the Friends of the Fair, they could keep that line item, you know, they could keep it in their books, okay, we've got three thousand, oh, we've got enough more donations, now we've got five. For your entertainment. That way, it's not, it stays earmarked for entertainment. Those people who want to donate that for entertainment, it stays strictly for that fair entertainment. Because it comes into, your donation comes into, to your budget, to your account, that becomes county general fund. That comes into the county coffers. But if you do your entertainment, make those donations to the Friends of the Fair, that way, then they can keep track of that and it is strictly for your entertainment.
Okay, so what would happen if we was, I mean, uh, we've done this with Friends of the Fair, what would happen if we was to say? It'd be the same way we had before, but what would happen if we was to say, okay, we know roughly what we want to work on for entertainment and, and, and kind of like a budget thing, where you guys are gonna give us exelon for the budget, the budget has got this en- entertainment and that's something that we agree, we're gonna go get and put into your thing and serve this out. But the problem we have is if we still wait till June, we have the working months, we'd have to figure out how to get money out there for us to begin. I understand how we, we really, we've always said if you want to make a zero, we get to the end of the year or the money has to come back, basically, we shorten our budget or we extend our budget a little bit more or something like that. I don't think there'd be an issue, issue, because now we're getting a lot more people involved in, with Friends of the Fair that, with, with something like that would work, is if we were to say, we would like to, this is our budget, ten thousand dollars, and we want to turn and say, okay, we want to try and see if we can earn five thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars. So we put that in the budget, but we don't get that money from you guys, we get like the ten thousand dollars, but we, as a board, go out and find us other money. If we make that money, that's great, if we exceed it, you know, we can, we can come back and say, hey, we'd like to change our line item. Instead of seven thousand dollars, we got enough money, we want to change that line item to eight thousand or whatever we have. We, we go so, we, we go from there, we spend the money on.
So we got two situations, one, one, the first situation, you don't want any sponsored or donated money to affect your budget, correct?
That's true.
Okay, and then the other one is the timing in which you receive approved budget monies.
You have to work with.
Um, because it's unique, because our, our fair lands right at the tail end of our budget cycle. And that's, we know.
It's not the first go around, it's the first month is what we have. And that, that, that's always got us, you know? And if we want to do that, uh, we, we could, we could do something like, we could work with about anything here. You know, but we can, we can go and understand, but this is our budget. Then you, we, if we put in a line item in that budget that says that we want to try for seven thousand dollars, it's just, understand, we're not gonna get the money from you folks, we either go out and we find it or we don't have it. And I'm only one person talking here, hopefully Billy will step up and, and say something, but, but I'd like to really think. We can make this work, but I would, I see something, we could put a lot of money here.
Put you on the spot.
I'll take it. In our budget here, under the fair miscellaneous fair, we have ten thousand dollars. We ask for twelve five, we approve ten thousand. Have we seen any of that ten thousand yet?
No, that's, I had too much.
Also checked that we're right.
Yeah.
So our fair is coming fast, we have, we only have one copy of this. And this is, this covers the for each side of it. Uh, a lot of the open judges and stuff like that doesn't cover, it covers our livestock judge, um, judges and stuff like that. And, um, after adding all up, it's quite a bit, and that doesn't even consider consumables.
That's just the judges that's in that, I kind of rounded them up a little bit. But this bottom line is, if we had to hire someone to sit in the building, we don't have that, that amount, but it's not that much money either.
I have a question, because now I'm confused. Well, I'm, I'm, I have been confused, but, so the money, the money we're talking about now, is that set aside from last year's budget? Is this considered twenty twenty-three's budget, this ten thousand dollars?
No.
Or is it now ten twenty-two-fours, because this is twenty-twenty-three's fair?
That's right.
And so.
We've never, we've never received money before the fair. We've always had to, we've always had to beg to get money to make sure we could get through the fair.
Well, can't we, since they do some of this bill paying themselves, can't we somehow look at it the way, say the library, as they're set up that we give them, they come to us in March or April and say, this is what we, we feel like we're gonna need for fair and they get that in a lump sum to take care of the fair for that year?
We did that last year, we give them the ten thousand.
In July.
In July.
For twenty-twenty-three's fair, but they're telling us that they're already set.
We never got money for the next year, never have, it's never happened.
So it's always been behind.
They're telling us now, we've always been, I know what he said.
And we, and that's the reason we had that money last year, because we did not have that money to work with, we worked out a little bit of money beforehand.
So to me, I mean, to me, this budget should be for next year's fair. And you should be able to come to us in February, March and say, we've had a meeting, this is what we think our expenses are gonna be. We could send you, give you a check to put in your account lump sum for the twenty-twenty-four fair, because this is the twenty-twenty-four budget. So somehow we have to fix that.
This isn't the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Next year's fair is the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
But that's not how it should, that's, that shouldn't be the way it works.
See, the money, the money allocated right now should be your twenty-three and then your twenty-four for your twenty-four fair.
Twenty-four fair is after your, after your yearly cycle, but that's.
And see, that's why we got into this issue, why we took over their accounts, because they were always.
But to be fair to them, somehow it got a year behind, somehow it got set up to where it's always a year behind.
Yeah, because we assumed, I mean, this was for the following year, somewhere along the line, when we came in last year, we missed a year in there. And, and, and how much, let's just go this way, how much will you allow us to put in our, in our, funds, fun things, just to carry over?
Your, basically your entertainment.
Our entertainment. I mean, three, four thousand, I'm, I'm trying to get you this year, okay? So let's just say, we take the money we have, kick me if I'm going out of line here, I'm making a commitment here that I don't think a lot of people are gonna really like. We had, we should, after the thing's paid, we should have six thousand dollars there, if you're, if you end up balancing and all that. If you tell us that, that we can only, that if we agree on an amount that we're gonna say, this is what we're gonna do, everything else that was done through fair, you guys give us the money to zero that sucker out with so much in that fund and then you give us our money to work out next year's fair.
I'm, I'm kind of going backwards, so when did Kara, when was Kara not part of the fair, when was she not getting paid?
This year she was not.
This year when?
She, um.
March or April?
She was there last year.
Okay, March or April, so we were still in that year's budget, we're not in the new year's budget. So my question is, if she wasn't being paid, what happened to the, um, salaries, line item, like who gets salaries in there? There had to have been some savings on that line item, there was.
We, we actually came in and talked to you about trying to get a bunch of stuff taken care of and we moved twenty thousand dollars out after trying to get stuff done. There was a big mix-up, we got a couple of things done and, and I, you know, we went over on Baumgar's because they, we need to see.
I, I remember that.
We could do that.
But that was what was left, was the twenty thousand?
Yeah, we moved that twenty thousand out of salaries.
Where I was going with this is so, okay, so we have, same. Where I was going with this is, so, okay, so, we have, see in the line item, we still don't have a manager, correct?
We do not have a manager.
So each month, that salary is not being used.
That's right.
So, you know, just a suggestion for this coming forward here is, maybe some of that money also be moved over to get them zeroed out into, obviously, they're behind by one year, but we don't have to change the budget, we might have to move a line item in the account, but maybe there'll be enough monies there that, because obviously we're saving money, I don't know.
And we are, I mean, that's, to be honest with you, that's the frustration, and it is a frustration with the board, it's just more about, you know, what we're doing to make this good. We want to get this straightened, and then if we can get that ten thousand pushed now, we have that for doing fair next year.
Well, one thing that you guys have been doing incorrectly is that anything to do with those buildings, that's what I was trying to get at, the Friends of the Fair, it's generous, they're great for the fair, but we have allocated funds for those buildings that should not be used to repair those buildings, I mean, because then it just throws everything off. And I believe former Commissioner Erwin brought that up, I believe you brought it up at one point, you guys, as urgent as it might seem to you, bring it before the board, the buildings, the wall, the grounds, the paint, I mean, there's some maintenance things there, but don't use Friends of the Fair's monies to repair those buildings. That's our obligation as commissioners, is to take care of those county buildings.
But it'd be the same way.
How much did you spend on, how much did Friends of the Fair give you for those roofs, for that roof?
Friends of the Fair didn't, Friends of the Fair channeled the money through a donor.
How much was it, though?
I'm, yes, eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so, just eighteen thousand dollars, if we had that eighteen thousand, if you had it back in your budget right now, what, we wouldn't be where we are right now.
We'd have excess money, you guys want it back.
But yeah, I understand. But we would still have excess money and not be in the hole. We could still evaluate those things based on that, and that's where the frustration comes, because we're, I mean, and I'm not going to take you down, there's a lot of good things that the fair does, and I certainly don't want to take away and make it better, but we've also given away a lot of events, that if we had those monies back, we wouldn't, I mean, that can go to your better entertainment, and those things all combined, and that's where the frustration gets to be on this side of the table.
And maybe that's if you had the money upfront, we could, you know, we could see where we're putting it.
Or, we've had situations where you've had the money upfront, and then it's been gone. It's been spent on other things, and then we get to the point where we're here, so there's got to be checks and balances for this, and it's something that, since I've been Commissioner, we've tried to figure out ways to help you guys, and vice versa. It's our responsibility to do a better job at explaining what we need to do, but building, those buildings, eighteen thousand dollars is a lot of money, and it shouldn't be spent on those, when we have the capabilities of taking care of that. So I think it's just a matter of maybe taking a step back when those situations come up and go, wait a minute, let's go before the board, this is a building issue, and maybe those funds, Friends of the Family, the Friends of the Fair, that money can be spent in those places without all of this convoluted mess, because that's where it gets to be, in my opinion, and we should have never spent that kind of money through Friends of the Fair on a roof, it should have come through the county.
And somewhere, we sat down through this, because that's where that additional money to raise the project came through the county.
By statute, we can't reimburse Friends of the Fair for handing you that money, and you go into a roof, we're going, okay, the roof's fixed, but you didn't have to spend that money. You know, you guys do an awesome job and you work hard, but that's the part where we get to, and then we're trying to balance and figure out where money's coming from. And you just add those two things up, the thirteen thousand last year, the eighteen thousand five hundred, that's a lot of money that didn't need to, some of it, yes, but not all of it. Some of it is worthy and it needs to happen, and we'd love to be able to just say, the fairgrounds are free, and we don't have to pay a dime for anything, but we just, we can't do that. I mean, it just can't happen, and you can't maintain your house that way. I mean, you can't maintain that beautiful fairground, it was donated, I had somebody say, well, that's what our tax dollars are for. But it's not, those roofs have to be done, and buildings have to be built, and you're using your funds, frankly, incorrectly, because we're glad to put roofs on a building, that's what we do.
Sound the same about, like I said, we're not going to turn anybody down that wants to work for the county, so I mean, that was their decision where they wanted to put it, and I understand what you're saying, if they're donating something to us, yeah, we need to take-
Technically, too, if somebody gets hurt on those buildings, ultimately, it's not the fair that's going to be responsible, it's going to be the county if someone gets hurt. So that's the other issue, too, if someone's up there on the roof doing it, as generous as it is, I'm not taking away from it, it's, I mean, then you're going to damage the ability in the future to have these events, because then insurance goes, I mean, it's just a vicious cycle, but we have to do it the right way in order to get you guys back to where you want to be, because you're running in the hole, and it's not fair to you guys.
I guess, when people donate, so, you answered my question, because I meant like they were willing to actually do the work, but I would just encourage you, once people want to donate, explain to them that as far as buildings go, you know, you're supposed, we're supposed to take care of that as a county, because we own the buildings, it's our responsibility. But you would be more than happy to take their money to other things that have to do with the fair, or projects you might want to do that we wouldn't necessarily give you the money for. And to be able to have, if your money for donations is in Friends of the Fair, we don't have anything to do with that, right? So you can do with it what you want.
And that's what they do, and, you know, and I'm not pointing fingers or anything, you know, three years ago, if we needed something done with the buildings, it's not budget. That's what was always said to us, until a couple, couple, couple years ago, maybe three years ago, something like that, we'll take care of the expenses of the buildings. And it did come out that way. But before that, it was always, you know, having your budget, why should you be ignoring a building? You know, and that's one reason the building would run down like it was, and you know as well as I do, the search and rescue, what an awesome job they're doing out there as far as that building goes, and they got a heck of a mess of a problem here, and that's one of the reasons the buildings were never, that was, that was the way, I always took it, and that's what I always heard, up until three, four years ago. And then it was brought that, we have issues, bring it before you get the buildings done. And we will do that from here on out.
If there, that's what we ask, if there's something major on a building, come to us so we can help find, you know, where the money needs to come from, you know, don't blindside us with that, oh, here's a ten thousand dollar bill we had that's fixed, you know. When there's something like, you know, come to us so we can help figure out where it needs to be. And you were asking about carrying over that money. That's where you need to use Friends of the Fair on your entertainment. Because frankly, we do care, but we don't care what Friends of the Fair carries over on donations for you on entertainment.
If they can help you carry over money that we've made for the next year for your entertainment, then it's out of our-
You see, our paperwork would have to go through them, because we can't write them a check to get rid of our rest. No, you're saying, they do all of our donations.
Yeah, the donations, you file all them to the Friends of the Fair, you know, if it's for entertainment, you know, they keep track of where, you know, they know it's earmarked for entertainment. If you've got an excess, like, hey, next year we've got extra money, we can do more entertainment through our donations. That way, it's not getting into the general fund that we have, what we have. Station, we're having to go there.
Because we don't want to, we don't want to take your money away from you, that people have donated, that doesn't seem right.
No, that belongs to the Friends of the Fair, I'll do that, I'll run through that, I'll approach them by, and see if they're willing to do it. I don't think that's a big one.
And then, then when the entertainment comes, the Friends of the Fair pays for that. Your bouncy house was seven thousand, and Friends of the Fair write the check to them before. Instead of you, as a fair board, doing it, basically, the Friends of the Fair are doing that side of it.
And we'll have our monies start boot-sticking first year, you're going to come through.
You'll see a much freer cash flow with the fair, if you guys would do it that way, and then it's up to us, then come at us and say, hey, I got a roof that needs repaired, and we'll figure out where it's going to come from, but you'd have better entertainment with that. I mean, just that money alone would have covered your entertainment plus.
Let us, let us talk to the board and see what we think will roll over that, maybe we can put into the Friends of the Fair, and we just kind of, we see where we're at, we get the bills paid, and come to you and say, hey, we might need five thousand dollars and zero ours out, until we start the addition, and you give us our ten thousand dollar budget, and we work for next year.
Be careful, because you should take that money, deal with Friends of the Fair.
That's what I'm, that's the problem I have, yeah, I don't want to relinquish.
Yeah, see, that's something, that's going to be a transition you're going to have to work through. I think there might be a problem if the fair or Friends of the Fair jack.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is, we can set up the number of four, five thousand dollars, we'd make the first payments, tell our money's gone, and then where they're at.
Yeah. You have four thousand dollars, you pay that, and the Friends of the Fair pick up the rest of it.
So in lead time, we have to get you, we have to get you straight now, where this budget that we just did is for next year's fair.
Okay. Somewhere along, we're going to have to patch it a little bit there.
We've got to figure out how to get you back to square one, so this is money for next year. And that way, in the spring, when you guys get your budget done, you can come to us and say, this is how much we'd like to have available to start paying for the things we're ordering for fair.
I honestly think we'll-
But we don't want to, we don't want to save from this, but that's when you have a budget adjustment to a salary, you can't.
Of course, but we might not have to change our amounts, if we, because the fair season's slowly dying, I mean-
It'll die off, because I think the only thing we're going to have is the premiums.
So, judge, that list of judges, they have, I guess, the two judges, the livestock judge and the poultry and rabbit judge, that they paid the week of fair, the rest of those judges have not been paid for last week. And then premiums will be calculated as we finish putting in results, and those will be paid, and honestly, I'm assuming they were paid sometime while I was on the Trinity League, I have no idea when, what the timing-
As soon as we got it done.
Like in every county, we always give out premium checks like an achievement date, so sometime in the next month or two, that, those will be done. I didn't have enough time to run a quick report to even see what we were at premium-wise for this year.
And that's fine, I mean, that's all right, so we got, we got a path, let's go ahead and approach it with the board, and we'll just go from there, and I'll come in with more of what we have, or whatever.
I'm just speaking as one, but I would like to see the board, I mean, I think the judges deserve to get paid, I don't think we should delay their payment, we need an amount, so that, you put the time in there, we can figure out a way to get that taken care of until the end.
We can get the judges taken care of, because we still have a couple frames of collections that we haven't seen. I think we can do that, and it's just going to be all those things, we'll get a real more, we'll have a pretty firm number on our money we're going to hand out, and just kind of look at a few other things, that's what we want to do, and we'll put a cost to it, and then just zero this up. Well, with the ex parte, we'll come in and say, we want to have three or four thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, whatever it is, and then we'll do a fun step.
Do you think, do you think you can have this closed out for the next, our next meeting to figure out where we're at with this, or is your next meeting?
Because we're probably looking at, probably a month before we can get all those premiums.
We're getting close.
So our, by first meeting in September, maybe.
Yeah, because the next meeting, I will be at State Fair, so we will, like, I'm doing all of fair entry, because there is no fair person out there, so I picked up all of that, Abby thankfully wrapped up a lot of the results, but just today, as we're sitting, I know we're short four categories of results in, so some of that to get done. We'll be close, to be re, but I'll be gone a whole week at State Fair, and then a few days.
I think we'll be close enough, I think, I think, we can sure shoot for the first September meeting, and then go from there.
Get everything on a plan slate, and maybe, this is where we would do all this, I'll bring in a proposal for our bylaws, that this is the way we're going to do it, our future people know exactly what we're looking at. And we'll, you know, we'll kind of, I'll check with Friends of the Fair and stuff like that.
When we talk about communication, I got one other thing, is our contract labor insured use the lawn boards and our pickups on our fairgrounds?
No.
I got to put that man over there, we'll question the answer.
Okay.
It's under our LG.
Our problem is, is you're not going to get someone like Kim to do that, that's going to happen. We may have to start-
Oh, she's an employee, I thought you meant like-
She's a contractor.
Yes, she is, as long as we have her.
Okay, that's where our communication is, we was told she couldn't touch it.
No, she's an employee.
And we allowed her to use her vehicle, and we accidentally busted a window out of her car.
Yeah, her, oh, I don't know, her private vehicle.
Well, no, she was told, really, that's the communication thing we have here, she said, well, I'll use my car so we don't get in trouble, and we busted the window out.
No.
Paul equipment stuff.
She's an employee.
She's in, contract labor is considered important, that's all I need to know.
Thank you, David.
I thought you meant people like-
Well, that's going to bring some-
Truck workers, she's an actual employee, but people like that come in and that rent the facility and stuff like that, they can't repeat.
Right, and that's the problem we have, we can't have an employee that's going to be willing to set those events for them.
They have to, because the people that rent the facility cannot, and they're not covered under our insurance.
We need to pay the spell to Lily.
Yeah, you guys just-
And that's kind of what I just brought up, we did, it wasn't the old protocol.
They need an hour to fix the big doors on the barn.
And then I'll go for the next one. Because that wasn't approved for market.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure that it's in the face, and we're going to go.
Okay, okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
Got some directions now.
I think, I think we're getting some of the confusion straight.
I think the confusion's straight.
So we just need to get it straight and go forward, and everybody understands.
What should be?
Billy and David, thank you both, you guys talked it this year, every day I was out there, you guys were scrambling, so without you two, this year it would have been tough.
And the fair was amazing, I hope everybody had a chance to come out, because it was a really great week.
The talent show was kind of cool, I call it.
All the way from start to finish, the fair board did a great job, the four H families and FFA kids stepped up and had a really great week, so it was an awesome, awesome week.
Yeah, thank you for all your labor out there, you did a lot.
And that's the same thing, we really didn't see the commissioners take up the fun night again. I mean, if they're there at least one night, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I'm not going to, I will, Garrett's the only one I see out there, it isn't that you weren't out there, but Garrett's the only one I see out there, but we need you guys down there, this is your fair, we're just having to put it on.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Next up is the executive session.
Sixty-four, four, five, a.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Roll the numero.
Very nice.
Litigation.